All right, Megan, I've got twelve thirty.
The time is twelve thirty, so we'll begin our meeting. This meeting is now open to the public and we have started recording. We will begin with an introduction to our Spanish interpretation as well as our language justice statement from Tanya Johnson.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Tanya and I am the interpreter for the Environmental Justice Program at CDPHE. Today I'm working with my colleague Valentina. I'm going to read the Zoom instructions and the language justice statement, first in Spanish and then repeat it in English. Hola, buenas tardes, me llamo Tanya y soy la intérprete del programa de Justicia Ambiental del Departamento de Salud Pública y Medio Ambiente de Colorado. Hoy estoy trabajando con mi colega Valentina. Antes de comenzar, quiero asegurarme de que todos y todas hayan seleccionado el idioma adecuado en Zoom. Si prefieren escuchar la presentación en español, hagan clic en el globito que aparece en la parte inferior de la pantalla de la computadora y seleccione en español bajo Interpretación. Si están usando un teléfono celular o una tableta, hagan clic en los tres puntos que están a la derecha donde dice more o más y eligen el español como su idioma de preferencia. Las y los integrantes de la comunidad están invitados a hacer sus comentarios en español si así lo prefieren. Nuestra organización ha asumido el compromiso de fomentar la justicia lingüística. Invitamos a la comunidad a usar su idioma de preferencia para participar en la reunión. Les agradecemos que hablan lenta y pasadamente y que usen palabras comunes para que sea más fácil de interpretar. Here we go in English. Before we get started, I would like to direct everyone to the appropriate language channel on Zoom. If you would prefer to listen in Spanish, please click on the small globe at the bottom of your screen and select Spanish. If you are on a tablet or phone, click the three dots to the right of your screen that says more and select Spanish there. During the meeting, there may be community members who choose to give their comments in Spanish. If you are not bilingual, you will need to click the English option to hear the interpretation. As an organization, we are committed to language justice. We would like to invite community members to participate in the meeting using their language of preference. In order to facilitate interpretation, please speak slowly, pause often, and use commonly understood vocabulary. Thank you so much. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Tanya. Language interpretation is now enabled.
All right, so before we turn it over to PSI to give us our welcome, I'd like to take a quick moment to announce a staffing change at PSI. Megan Maybin has taken over the Supporting Facilitation role in lieu of Leland. Megan joined PSI a few months ago and is focused on packaging EPR at PSI. She has experience partnering with municipalities on implementing circular systems and increasing resource recovery, as well as working with the industry to develop Australia's Product Stewardship Scheme for textiles. So I think she'll be a great fit on the Colorado team and we're excited to welcome you, Megan. And I also want to let you know that Scott Cassell was not able to join us for today's meeting. So Megan will be stepping in as facilitator for today's meeting. And with that said, Megan, I will turn it over to you from here.
Thanks, Dala. Hi, everyone. Welcome to Colorado's first technical work session for 2024. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Megan Maybin and I'm with the Product Stewardship Institute, which is the facilitator for the Advisory Board. Thank you, Dala, for the introduction. Today's meeting is a technical work session. The goal of today's meeting is to provide input to CAA on the minimum recyclable list, responsible end markets, and the cost reimbursement formula. We will have public comment at the end of each discussion topic. And today, the role call will be taken electronically. Board members, please type your name and affiliation in the chat. Be sure to send it to everyone. And now I will turn it over to Pete for the first discussion topic.
Perfect, thank you. And I'm just trying to type my name in as quickly as I can. And there we go. So as Megan said, the plan today is to go through three areas that I think were brought forward to CDPHE's areas that there may be additional discussion that that were requested for. So I think we've got some latitude within the schedule. So if there's areas potentially that we need less discussion on, we can, I think, adapt as needed as we go forward in the plan. So some of the slides I have included in the deck today are somewhat of a revisit of where we've been already. They're more just reminder slides. And then some have gotten additional questions or details that, you know, try to provide an additional context to what's happening. So if we just move to the next slide. So just the minimum recyclables list, we have certainly had quite a few discussions as part of the needs assessment. And as the work started on the program plan, we do need to provide the list of minimum or the list of materials that will be collected in a manner that's as convenient as the collection of solid waste across the state. We are proposing right now to simply use the list that was developed and consulted upon as part of the needs assessment. So if we just move one slide forward, and I know you've seen this slide many times already, but this is the list of materials that was included as part of the, as part of the needs assessment. I think generally there has been relative support for this list of materials. But as I mentioned, there are some potential areas where there may be some questions as to whether there's some reevaluation we should do of certain categories. So if we move one more slide forward, I think there is a question to say, are there materials that we should be isolating that may require additional discussion? So I think as part of one of the last meetings we had, I think we had certainly heard from Mark about clear PET thermoforms. I think we'd heard from Rick in the past about about paper cups, whether they should be added to the list and PET thermoforms, whether they should be potentially moved to the additional materials list. So wanted to get some feedback as to are there other potential materials that we need to discuss in more detail that should be included or excluded as part of that minimum recyclables list? And then where for each of those materials do we see potential problems where evaluation may not have been correct around either the collection sorting the end markets or potential detriments associated with those specific materials? So I'll maybe open it up there. I know there was some discussion on some of these at the last meeting and I think there was some discussion that folks were going to take back and have a bit more discussion within their organizations.
Barrett, I can see you've got your hand up there. Go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon. Sorry, my, I feel like Mark was saying it's all good, but it's a little bit delayed. So I hope you all can hear it. It's very gentle voice connections. I was just wondering, can you just clarify please for me just the difference between the minimum recyclables list and the additional material list? On when those are going to be implemented? Because don't they both say twenty thirty? Can we just clarify that real quick? You don't mind?
Yeah, happy to Barrett. So Peter Hargreaves, sorry, CA. So for the minimum recyclables list, those are materials that we will be required to collect. The pro will be required to collect as of implementation, program implementation. So whenever that date lands in 2026, the pro will be required to collect all of those materials on a statewide basis. The additional materials list, we will be putting together as part of the program plan, an outline for how those materials will be collected throughout the states. And that list of materials, we will be looking to collect those materials as of 2026 as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. To Richard now.
Yes, I'm having problems with my video, so I'm not going to turn that on right now. But I just wanted to speak to thermoforms in general. So I do think that we should consider carving out polypropylene thermoforms so that we can track them well and compare them. If if we're trying to encourage users to transition away from PET thermoform and styrofoam thermoform, polypropylene thermoform is a very marketable and recoverable product. And we might want to carve that out to compare and contrast against PET thermoform. And then to Caroline's comments two meetings ago, it would be nice to get clarification from you, CAA, on the thermoform in PET. And I don't believe it is considered a contaminant, but I do believe it is not a preferred component of bottle stock PET. And as we've stated in the past, there is a limit to how much thermoform can be introduced to PET bottle stock and make it work. So I'd like to make that clear. On the paper cups, I'd like to just speak again to the fact that I think unlike film, paper cups actually are collectible, are processable, and do have viable end markets now. So given that they all meet those three criteria and we're trying to encourage manufacturers of products to take back products, I think it would be good for us to encourage paper cups, given that the mills are finally stepping up to the plate and starting to recycle the cups. That's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Peter, CA. So thanks for that react. So we have been looking at, we have spent, our team has been spending a lot of time talking to end markets around the acceptability of PET thermoforms. So yes, there is a question of, if I can call it a recipe around the threshold. And there is some differences right now between certain markets of what their acceptable threshold is. But we think there is more than adequate space for those markets to take additional thermoforms from Colorado and still deliver against the bottling requirements or the specifications for bottles within that we'd be able to take those materials. And the other point, sorry, was on, we are going to be capturing thermoforms separately. We are looking to capture that data separately. So we do have that currently right now as we will be receiving reporting differently from our producers on that side. And then, sorry, there was one additional point, Rick, that I'm missing.
The paper cups.
Oh, paper cups. Yeah, so I think the concern with paper cups is just simply we've heard some feedback around collection systems that they're not currently in all of the collection systems. So I think that might be a material that we can quickly move potentially from the additional materials list to the minimum recyclables list. So we are doing some additional work on that right now, just to better understand that and and sort of what the pathway might be if it's not right at the beginning of implementation. It might be something we might be able to move quickly over to to the minimum recyclables list.
Thank you.
Thanks both. And now go to Gail.
Yes, thank you. Gail Gary, City of Steamboat Springs City Council, following up on Rick's comment. As we look at the minimum recyclable list as well as the AML, just I think keeping in, one of the things want to keep in mind is back to kind of the thresholds that he talked about, making sure and it'd be great to understand if there are outliers on the minimum recyclable list in terms of collection systems as well as end markets. And just want to make sure that everything that is on the minimum recyclable list does have, you know, collection systems as well as is able to be able to be recycled today. So would love, whether right now or for future discussion, what might be an outlier on the minimum recyclable list as we go forward in terms of discussion? And then a more kind of specific question would be, where did we land on wrapping paper? I know that there have been some concerns brought up about wrapping paper and specifically whether, you know, it has foil or glitter or has tape and maybe somewhat of a hard product. So would be curious where we landed on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. I'll maybe respond if I can. I think the, I think all of the materials that are currently on the minimum recyclables list, we feel comfortable have collection systems that are in place and have end markets and they can be sorted. I think that's part of the criteria that we tried to work through to make sure that all of those pieces fit together. So I don't think we as CA have concerns with the list as to the materials that are currently on it. We do have as part of, and if we, if we could move back one slide, we do have non-metalized gift wrap that, and I apologize, I couldn't adjust the size of the tables. But non-metalized gift wrap is on there. I think there has been some comments that we received back from other stakeholder groups about potentially, do we capture that more broadly under, under like a craft paper type of definition? So it is recyclable material. It can be sorted. There is certainly some concern about, I think what you mentioned, which is is the resident potentially putting materials into the recycling bin that it may be, maybe wrapping paper that has metal or glitter or whatever associated with it that may make it more difficult to recycle? I think part of our consideration is I don't think we want to end up with a situation where we're not taking materials that can be recycled. There's communication issues that need to get addressed as we move forward. But certainly I don't think we want people putting materials onto the marketplace that can be recycled and we're applying eco modulation to them. So we're punishing them with higher costs because, simply because their product looks somewhat similar to another product which is not recyclable.
Okay, thanks. So it sounds like that's something like that in terms of anything with metal or glitter, it would be, we'll just, we'll have to be, we'll have to communicate about that. And part of the education process.
I think that's a question of how do we make sure that we've got proper education in place to make sure that we're only capturing the type of gift wrap that can actually be recycled? And so that will be a communication challenge that we'll need to focus on moving forward to make sure that we're getting clean product.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gail. To Scott.
Hello, Scott, the Fife Glass Packaging Institute. I don't want to beat dead horses or anything like that, but I'll generally align with with Rick's comments on the PET thermoforms. I know from not, I don't represent PET, but I'm in tons of meetings with them on bottle, bottle issues. And I know that PET thermoforms are an issue for their bail, you know, beverage or bottle bail specs. I've heard it repeatedly in a couple other states that have EPR, although those states also have a deposit system, bottled deposit system. So they're creating separate bottle, bottle bales that sometimes get impacted with extra PET thermoform material that then degrades the bail quality for the bottle bales. And so I guess my, my additional statement would be, you should probably align that to your end markets, right? If your end markets are the end markets that want, that don't want the thermoforms, then you got to figure out how to get the thermoforms out better or figure out how to sort them out. But it's, you can't look at it in a, in just isolation of what is possible. It's like, where's the bail going to go? So and and metal, I just, you know, gift wrap that's got metal and stuff like that is going to be. Consumers will get confused. So I just, there's going to need to be really clear education on, on the gift wrap and where it goes.
Thanks, Rick. I mean, you know, all of these things we will, you know, you run into challenges with different types of materials when it comes to recyclable, not recyclable. I mean, you know, that type of issue has been there for a while when it comes to different resins of plastics and things like that. So it's a question of how do we make sure that it's as clear as possible as part of the program moving forward? And how do we then look at some of the types of mechanisms that are built in as requirements for eco modulation and things like that to sort of incent the types of designs that I think are, or the outcomes that are intended as part of legislation?
Okay, and next to Caroline.
Caroline Mitchell, City of Fort Collins. I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. The first one, as we were talking about thermoforms, Peter, can you clarify if in the market research, was your team anticipating the thermoforms would be combined in with PET bottles or that they would be collected separately? At the MRF scale, like would they be marketed in the same bail or would they be collected and marketed separately?
I think we've looked at both sides. A lot of the end markets for the material will again create a bit of a recipe themselves that will allow for a certain level of thermoforms to be in those materials. So I think we've looked at and we're still looking at both around, you know, the type of infrastructure we might want and how to, how to potentially separate that material out if we wanted to. Is it getting sorted out at the MRF or is it getting sorted out afterwards or is it potentially allowed for within the, within the end market?
So maybe to be determined as of now.
Correct.
For that piece. Okay.
I think though generally what we've heard though is there's an ability to be able to accept that material. And I'll maybe let, let Scott weigh in because I assume that's why he's got his hand up.
I was just, Scott Saunders with KW, just looking at this list. I mean, have we done any real polling of actual markets? To really see what, what is marketable today and maybe try to assess a value just as a snapshot so, so the group could see of what on this list actually has a market value and what, what is, is, you know, aspirational, I guess is the best way to say it.
So Scott, I think we've looked at all of the materials that are on that list as to what have markets that are in place, sizable markets to be able to take the materials that are flowing through. So I think we've looked at all these materials. I don't think we've, I don't think we have any concerns with the materials. Obviously values go up and down depending on markets, but the question is, are there outlets for this material? And, and you know, the producers themselves will be, will be paying for the cost of the materials to be collected and managed minus the revenues that might come from, from, from the value side, I think, which is what you're pointing to.
And Caroline, back to you.
Caroline Mitchell, City of Fort Collins. Thank you. I think, you know, we've talked a lot about the thermoforms and so I think it's going to be tricky no matter which way we go. And so I think, you know, it's, I trust there's been lots of research into all of this. But I appreciate the clarity that you're all are still looking into whether it makes sense to separate them or not, but we'll. Yeah, I feel comfortable on the thermoform topic. But I have a couple of questions on the AML. I feel like I may have said this before and, but the, it's surprising to me that the aluminum foil and foil trays are on the, the alternative. Let's see, I forget what AML stands for, but.
List, yeah.
I'm trying to speak in fewer acronyms but forgetting what they stand for. So I just wanted to raise that one again because I feel like that has been a material that has been a yes for many years and most of the programs that I've worked in. So maybe I'll pause there, Peter. Did you have, is there anything in particular you would add to the aluminum foil and foil trays? And I guess the one last context I would add into that is that the, with the state law that has now banned styrofoam packaging in restaurants in Colorado, the foil trays are kind of the primary locally recyclable option available to restaurants. And so I think we may be seeing more of those here in the short term. So I'll pause there and would love to hear your thoughts on that material.
So I think the evaluation of that material, when you look at it, foil and foil trays, food contact materials other than, you know, beverage containers, the concern is often around food residue that will be potentially attached to them, cheese that gets stuck to them, that type of thing, which makes it to some degree more difficult to sort at a MRF and that impacts the value of that material as well. Typically foil and foil trays have lower value market than than aluminum beverage containers would have. And so I think partly the result of them being on the additional materials list is partially for that reason. I think your point is a good one, which is lots of municipalities, lots of programs are currently collecting this material already. I don't think we're looking to take any bit of a step back on these materials and not collecting them. I think we were just being cognizant of the fact that there are some issues with it. I don't think it was collected. I need to double check the, the scoring, but I think there was not, there was some municipalities that were not collecting it or some programs that were not collecting it. But I think that is another material that you would look to say it, it makes sense to potentially be moving that material more quickly forward onto the, onto the minimum recyclables list. But again, it does have some properties associated with it that do add some difficulty in the management or the processing of it.
Yeah, thank you for the reminder that just because it's on the AML doesn't mean that programs have to stop accepting it. But being on the AML doesn't mean a step back for communities that are already accepting that. So yes, thank you for that additional context, Peter.
And if I can add, like, I want to be clear that I don't think we're looking to take a step back in programs. So I think we want to try to keep the materials that are currently in. The idea is to move the yardsticks forward and increase the amount of materials. So that's the sort of, I think, continuous improvement side that I think we're looking to address. Obviously, there's materials that are more difficult to manage or potentially have some market issues, but I don't think we're looking to make it more difficult or present barriers to residents in recycling the materials that they may already be recycling.
Okay. I have one more quick comment and one more question. So when you were mentioning the wrapping paper potentially being added in with the craft paper category, I feel like they, at least to the community and residents, feel like very different materials. So I would recommend from my perspective, keeping those separate. And the question that I had, I appreciate you reminding us of the additional materials list and that I guess I had forgotten that the anticipation would be that those materials would move to the minimum recyclables. That, um, I guess I had forgotten that the anticipation would be that those materials would move to the minimum recyclables list. In just one year's time, if I heard that correctly from you, um, and if so. I'm curious if. If C A A has put together a list of what exactly the hurdle is for each of these materials? And how that would be planned to be addressed in that timeline, um. I feel like a lot of these on here have been sort of shoulder slash problematic materials for a long time and I. Maybe I misheard you in the, the one year timeline for them moving over, but if I didn't, then can you help clarify the? It seems like a lot of materials that have a lot of needs to move in a short amount of time.
No, uh, so to be clear, no, the, the goal would not be to move everything over in a one-year time span. I think the goal is to say. What are materials potentially that we can look to bring over into to add to the minimum recyclers list? The legislation requires us on an annual basis to reevaluate the minimum recyclables list. Uh, so we can look at that list and we will be working, uh, uh, with the advisory board on that side, uh, to reassess and. Uh, the goal will be to bring more materials onto that minimum recyclers list. So what are the right conditions we need to do? Uh, as an example, paper cups. You know, where are the, where are the current gaps currently in the marketplace? So we may be collecting it from eighty percent of. Of the population, but there's twenty percent where there may be a, an issue with collection systems or. A processing facility that may have trouble sorting those materials. How do we look to, uh, address that gap so that in future years it can be moved on to the minimum recyclables list?
Perfect. Thank you for that clarity. I, so maybe a sort of a different way to say that might be that this is. This is the, the list of things that could be recyclable if. X or Y or Z, and that every year we will pause to look at whether those barriers have been. Um, addressed for any of these materials and that they make sense to move to the minimum recyclables list, but they don't have a fixed time at which that happens. It's sort of. Depend material, individual material dependent.
That's a, that's a fair assessment and there may be some materials that we never move off the additional materials list, so. Um, I think currently on that list right now, we have, um, um. Uh, uh, again, there may be some sorts of materials where it just simply doesn't make sense. The contamination. Uh, type issues may be too big, so we, uh, decide to potentially just collect them at. Uh, depot as an example, um, so we're only going to deal with it at drop offs, uh, sites rather than. That's going to be a curbside material. So there may be considerations like that where cer- certain materials may not make sense to collect curbside.
Okay, that's all for me for right now. Thank you for the clarity, Peter.
Thanks Caroline. Uh, Rick, over to you.
Uh, Rick Hader, uh, Murph Swordfish Consulting. So there, there's a plan also. So we have, we picked the medium plan, I think, and in that plan it identified a timeframe. For instance, film, uh, had a twenty thirty expected inclusion or at least a discussion as a goal to get it there. So I figured a lot of these were tied to the plan, which kind of gave a, a benchmark timeframe for these to be introduced. Unless they immediately became apparent to meet all the criteria. Is, is that a good assumption or thought process, Pete?
That's fair, Rick. Um, a- again, some of these materials, again, there may be smaller barriers for us to. Um, that, that need to be overcome to, to, to move them from, from the, um. A M L to the, uh, uh, to the, to the minimum recyclables list. So I think that's all I was trying to mention. I think some materials like paper cups may be, may be less of a barrier potentially than some of the other materials. Like flexibles, which you've talked about.
Thanks, Pete, and Barrett.
Yeah, Barrett Jensen Waste Connections. Um, and Peter, so what happens in the, you know, case where. We get to twenty thirty and there, let's say, aluminum packaging is just not ready to go. What, what, what happens then?
Um. Well, uh, so we, we are directed to, um, meet, uh, the, um. Um. Oh, I guess we're guided by, uh, that medium scenario. So that medium scenario is going to potentially look to. Um, you know, with the types of investment we're going to need to make over time to, uh, to ensure that systems are in place to accept those materials. But, um, that doesn't override the fact that if there's simply, um, if we simply cannot. Um, prove, uh, that a material should be on the minimum recyclables list based on the type of criteria that we've assessed. Um, then it won't be on the, uh, minimum recyclables list, uh, so, um. That will get reassessed on an, on an annual basis, um, and, uh, we're required to, again. Redo program plans as well, so, um, you, you know, we'll be in the midst in twenty thirty. Uh, or just before or just after twenty thirty of, of doing a, a new program plan as well. Um, that would be required in a new needs assessment. Uh, because that's required every, uh, every five years.
Okay, so we're not necessarily committed to the material on the additional materials list going into the minimum recyclables list?
No, I think everything will be evaluated on an annual basis, Barrett, um, uh, as to where things stand and, and that will help. Um, inform, I think, ourselves as to, uh, what, what investments where, you know, where gaps may. It still exists as to what needs to be done to try to overcome those, uh, those issues.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put a call out for any members of the public who would, who are interested in providing public comment. You can submit your name and, and organization in the chat. But until then, we have another ten minutes for further advisory board questions. Or back to you, Pete.
Okay, uh, I, I don't have much more to say, um, uh, I think certainly helpful feedback and I, and you know, I think. You know, Barrett's question is a good one. I think if I could just reflect on that for a minute, which is. We know this space is, is dynamic. We know packaging is changing on a regular basis. We know that, um. Material markets are changing, technology is changing, it's a fairly dynamic space, um, and so. That sort of reassessment of what's happening, I think, is an important part of the process.
All right, thanks, Pete. Is there any further questions on this topic from the advisory board? In that case. We'll continue on and I will turn it over to Brandon for the first of three public comment periods of today's. Technical work session. Members of the public, if you are interested in providing public comment. Please submit your name and organization in the chat. We will call on attendees in the order that requests were received. Since we have limited time, we will allow two minutes for each comment. We encourage commenters to focus on topics discussed during the meeting. As a reminder, public comment is for feedback only. If you have questions, please submit them to E P R comments. At S T T A E dot C O dot U S. Let me just correct that. E P R comments at S T A T state. Dot co dot U S. Over to you, Brandon.
Thank you, Megan, and I'm also going to put that email address in the chat for everyone to reference. So as Megan said, if anyone does have any comments, please put your name in the chat and I'll call on you, uh, in the order that I see them.
Should we take, uh, should we take a five-minute break and let, uh, comments come in or do you want me to start into? The next section and, uh.
I think let's start into the next section. Uh, we can move on to, yeah, to the next topic and we have another two. Sessions of public comment planned after the next two topics. So I'll hand back to you, Pete.
Okay. Uh, so just moving into responsible end markets, so we started into this conversation at our last, uh, at our last session. Uh, so some of this is a bit of a, a, a bit of a just a reminder as to, as to where things were. So next slide. Um, so the legislation does require us to sure, ensure that any covered materials collected for recycling. Will be transferred to responsible end markets. Um, California, Colorado and Oregon all have to some degree coordinated definitions around what responsible end markets are. Um, uh, so there is some ability for us to look at, at a harmonized approach. We are currently right now proposing to focus on the reclamer. So the person, let's say, making. Uh, plastic flakes or pellets or potentially somebody making sheet metal. Uh, not the converter. So the, uh, the converter would be, let's say, the person that's taking the flakes or the pellets and making a product out of them. Um, uh, and that is largely for the fact that, um. Uh, it becomes abundantly complicated as we start to look and going more and more into the actual. A value chain to be able to properly track that material. Oregon and California do have, uh, more specific standards around how the, how, uh, the pro is required to measure. Um, responsible end markets, uh, so we are looking to some degree, uh, to those jurisdictions to ensure that. If we can harmonize the approach, uh, there's some advantage, not only to producers, but also to everyone within the recycling chain. To make sure that, um, uh, there's not additional administrative burden from one state to another. Uh, next slide. Um, so these are just a few more, uh, ju- just context slides, because I think there was some questions I had around. Or, or that came from the advisory board just around specifically what's done in other jurisdictions. So we've included some slides here in, um, on, um. The first one just deals with, with, with Canada and what we currently have in place. Around, uh, verificat- verification and tracking of end markets in, uh, in Canada, so. Largely, this is an evolving space within Canada right now. Uh, so Quebec does have. Uh, requirements to en- ensure that materials are tracked from collection to final, um, final destination or disposition. Um, and that only the materials that can be traced can count towards the calculation of recycling. Uh, rates, uh, so that's really speaking specifically to materials that are marketed, so that same type of definition. Uh, that we've looked at, um, um, uh, earlier. Ontario and Alberta right now are in the process of developing a verification process. Uh, uh, or verification standard for processing, uh, they have, neither one has come out with those. But I know that the both, or both of those, uh, provinces are in the process of putting, uh, that together. There are certainly other examples that can be brought forward. Recycle B C. Um, does have, uh, some requirements in place that are sort of voluntary. Uh, they permit, uh, the marketing of, um, um, materials in non-O E C D countries. If they meet or exceed environmental and health and safety standards. Uh, compared to what is seen in, in other, uh, O E C T, uh, countries. Um, we do see in other types of materials, electronics is probably a good example. Uh, where you do have standards that are in place for the management of those materials, so. Uh, are two standards, uh, that are in place, uh, that require verifications of how that material has been processed in the end markets that it's sending up in. So there are some examples, um, within, uh, North America right now that are in place around how those. How those materials are being verified, uh, today, but again, it's still specifically for packaging. It's, uh, it's a relatively newer area. Uh, next slide over. If we look to Europe, uh, similar type point, they're a little further ahead. Uh, most European countries do, um, uh, ensure that, uh, that materials are being verified. And tracked up to final des- uh, destination, um, and then in. May of twenty twenty four, all waste shipments, uh, were required to apply, uh, comply with the waste shipment, uh, directive. Um, so if materials were being shipped outside of Euro- Europe, uh, companies exporting the waste will have to demonstrate. That the waste exported has been properly managed in the facility that manages it in the recipient country. That they carry out independent audits of the facilities to which they ship and they demonstrate those facilities manage waste in environmentally sound manner. Um, and in the, in the absence of, of a positive audit, then companies need to, uh, stop exporting their waste. Uh, to that, uh, specific facility. So again, this is a newer area. There are requirements, as I said, in, 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 uh, each of the three states, um. Uh, so we are to some degree, uh, uh, sort of blazing a bit of a trail on this side as, as we move forward. Uh, next slide over. Um, so I, I discussed this at the last meeting. We are, we are, uh, looking at developing, uh, a national approach. To responsible end markets, uh, that will adapt itself to state-specific requirements that may relate to. Responsible end markets. Um, but three main elements. We'll look to make sure that there's a verification in place, um. Uh, for responsible end markets, that there's proper material tracking that's taking place. Um, of the materials that are being collected and that there is a process as well for intervention. So if there is. Uh, non-compliant entities, that there's, uh, uh, steps that can be taken for corrective actions so that those. Facilities can come into, uh, compliance, uh, with, uh, the, uh, with the requirements. Next slide over. We are proposing, uh, uh, an approach that would be based on I S O nineteen. Uh, oh, one, one, uh, with costs being taken in as a consideration. Three-step process, that's really, um, uh, a plus a chain of custody, so. There'll be an initial screening that will need to be taken pla- place, um, to make sure that the, um. Uh, the market is, uh, verified. We are looking as much as possible to see. How do we make sure that we, um, coordinate with other jurisdictions? So. Uh, S C A is looking at this from a national perspective. If that market's been verified already. And it's been used by three or four different service providers, uh, then it wouldn't need to be necessarily verified or wouldn't need to be verified again. Uh, that there's, uh, reporting, uh, um, review that takes place, um. Uh, to detect whether there's any anomalies with the information and that there are selective audits that would be taking place. Uh, to make sure that those responsible end markets are in compliance with the, uh, with the responsible end market standards. Next slide. So this is a relatively, uh, new area. I know we had a number of questions, uh, last week, uh, on it, um. Uh, we're certainly not trying to direct materials, uh, or, or limit, uh, where people can send materials. Other than to make sure that the markets, there are actual markets in place for that material and that they meet the requirements that we've set out. Rick?
Yeah, Rick Cater Swordfish Consulting, Murph, um. I so, that's a pretty high standard for startups and smaller organizations, I've heard. Um, the, will you have? Um, uh, some type of entry, uh, uh, support that will allow startups to begin the process? Without having been I S O certified?
So is this for, you mean startups, uh, startup end markets or start, startup, um?
End markets.
End markets. Um, yeah, I think we can look potentially, uh, Rick, I think it's a helpful point for us to, to go back and have a discussion on. Um, um. Yeah, we can take that back and, and have that discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this stage, Pete?
Who would be paying for the I S O certification?
Uh, well, the pro, the pro would end up, the pro would end up paying for, uh. Um, I guess the end market would potentially be doing the work, uh, themselves, uh, but we would, if there are selective audits that are being undertaken. The pro is undertaking those selective audits.
All right, thank you.
Scott De Five, over to you.
Thank you, Scott De Five, glass packaging. And, uh, my only, my only input on this is, it's, it's fine. I think it, it. Makes sense to queue up the. or to sync up the definitions of responsible end markets, but just the way that Oregon and California are doing it, it may not beget the way that you don't want to follow all of their pathway. Uh, I think definite defining the end market similarly, but the way that they're measuring things inside the state, I think is different and the, the extra layers of, um, the hurdles that they're putting up on the responsible end markets, they're actually tracking to where the end markets send their material.
Yes. So I think California, I think what you're speaking to is California is asking for tracking to the actual converter from the reclamer to the converter. I don't think we're looking to
And beyond.
I don't think we're looking to take that step because I think you, you know, that, that definitely creates lots of challenges. Um, I'm not, I'm not completely sure how realistic that is to be able to do, um. So are there other concerns though? Just, uh, Scott, while, while you have the microphone that
Oh, 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 uh, o- only in, in our world, which is where the MRF material requires a secondary process, which is the end market. And then that material gets processed and has its own quality standards about where that material then ends up. Um, and just makes it more, it's not a one-stop shop from collection to MRF to end market. It's another stop and that's where we've seen some of the issues in the in those states.
Thank you.
Hi Liz.
Which you don't have in Colorado, which is a tighter circle in Colorado. So. Sorry.
Thanks, Scott. No worries. Over to you, Liz.
Liz Chapman, Recycle Colorado, uh, representing the nonprofit seat. So one of the things about, uh, that I saw on the, if we could go back a slide, um, the verification, there we go. Thank you. Um, there's an audit and then verification bodies contracted by C A A. Are those going to be third party? So the system I would think needs to be set up in such a way that the audits and the people who approve them, um, the organization that approves them initially need to be different entities to keep that third party, um, uh, objectivity. And your question, Peter, about how is this, how is it currently happening in Colorado? I would defer to Wolf on this, but I don't believe that the state is verifying many end markets at this stage. I don't know of a system we have in place right now.
Yeah, I can jump in real quick and provide a quick overview. So we do regulate, uh, end markets in Colorado. For example, anyone who's taken material from a MRF, uh, and is doing any type of secondary processing or actually convert, converting that material into a new product um, is subject to the solid waste regulations and we do inspect and verify those facilities that are conducting that. How, uh, and, and manage those materials appropriately and meeting, uh, turnover rates, so on and so forth. Um. But that line ends at the Colorado state boundaries. So everything that's exported to a different state or to a different country, you know, is, is not something we have either authority or the, uh, resources to inspect. So, um, having a, a third-party verification, verification standard makes a lot of sense in my point of view and from a lot of other states where we see things crossing boundaries. It's just like E-waste, right? Like it's, it's the ideal scenario where you've got like a third-party auditor, whether it be E stewards or R two that can, um, go across state boundaries and, and make sure materials are getting managed appropriately going from, uh, you know, point B to point C, so.
So, uh, sorry, just briefly, um, uh, so just to follow up on that Wolf, um, and, and just so I, just to make sure I understand, um. W- your, uh, definition of, uh, responsible end market, um, I, I guess what the state's looking at, it's not necessarily looking at whether that material is becoming a commodity. It's just looking at making sure that that material is being managed in a way that doesn't hurt the environment or doesn't pose a risk to a, a labor-related risk. Is that fair?
It's both actually. Um, so we make sure that there are no impacts to groundwater, no odor issues, and we also do look at turnover rate. So if someone is taking in a, a feedstock, something that's been sent off-site from a MRF and they're claiming to utilize that material into making a new product, they are still subject to turnover requirements. They can't just keep stockpiling it. So, um, we, we have a lot looser requirements for end users than we do with, uh, secondary processors or MRFs. Um, but we do still, you know, require annual reporting and periodic inspections to verify that that material actually is being, uh, converted from a recyclable material into new product and going offsite and not just getting stocked up.
Okay, helpful. And, and just, uh, Liz, a response to your one question, um, yes, I think we are looking to contract uh, verification bodies that would do that work. It wouldn't be something that C A would be doing in-internally.
Great. Thanks, Pete. Uh, to Scott Saunders.
Uh, yeah, yeah, Scott Saunders, K W Plastics. Um, you, you know, it seems to me that we're, the, the state hasn't has a, has a goal here to manage a converter more like a solid waste processing facility instead of a, a business buying a valuable commodity. So for companies like ours, many of our customers in our, in our segment of the market chain do not disclose where their material, you know, where they're putting the material and they keep that as a trade secret. So that would be very difficult to crack through, uh, uh, you know, for the, for the industry. Also, you know, we buy this material. And so it, it is not in our financial interest to stack it up or not to utilize it. We, it is in our financial interest and the members of our industry to consume the material that we purchase. And so if the MRF industry does not ship us trash, then we don't landfill it. And I, and I think if the MRFs don't get trash from the curb, they don't landfill it. And, and when you talk about a lot of these requirements, you're going to add tens of thousands of dollars of cost to these processors. Many are very small. I think our, our budget here for the ISO program is just under thirty thousand dollars a year to, to maintain that. So yes, it will eliminate smaller, um, entrepreneurial companies that are, they're coming into the business for something that's probably not going to generate a lot of positive, uh, effect.
Uh, so, so appreciate that, uh, Scott. I mean, I think, um, you know, we're looking at this from a compliance perspective, uh, the, the requirements are in the legislation uh, that require us to ensure that the materials are collected or being transferred to responsible end markets. So we're trying to find a way uh, that is at least as, as little burden, uh, applying as little burden as possible, but also trying to meet the intent of the legislators. And I, and I think, you, you know, what is being asked for is, how do we just simply make sure? Because I think there is uh, some out there that have concerns that materials are being, whether they're being properly processed into, into co-into commodities and into, into new products. So I think we're trying to address that, uh, that issue as part of, as part of this program. Sorry, Wolf.
Yeah, I'll just add to that real quickly, uh, Wolf Cry C D P H E. Appreciate the comments there, Scott, and I definitely hear you loud and clear. So the way we kind of look at it is, is it, is a risk-based situation, right? Like you've got materials that are very much established and markets they've had in markets for decades. We consider those incredibly low-risk materials of specifically something that's inert, like glass is insanely low risk. There's not a lot of issues you can come up with something like that. But when you've got, uh, materials that are emerging or have limited end markets, um, you know, I, I, we talked a little bit about, you know, P T thermforms, like are those just addressing bales or are there actual end markets? I- if somebody's taking just that, what are they actually doing with that? So more of the emerging markets or, or limited markets are kind of more of the concern just to make sure they actually are being managed appropriately, less so than the common everyday commodities that we see recycled day in and day out on a regular basis.
Back to you, Scott.
Yeah, I, I would, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Wolf, and I would propose, uh, uh, sorry, Scott Saunders, K W. And I, I would propose that you have a criteria for uh, markets with a positive value versus markets with a negative value. So if, if there's a commodity that, that a market is charging, um, you know, a tipping fee to take, that's one set of criteria. But when you, when you're looking at aluminum cans or you're looking at high-density natural today that's in excess of seven hundred dollars a ton, that there's zero risk that somebody's going to pay that and, and not try to extract every single pound of value out of it that they can. So maybe, maybe Peter, if we can modify the approach to negative value, positive value, that, that might make a lot more sense and that's where nefarious actors could come in on something that's new and unproven.
Uh, appreciate that. I mean, we can look at, look at it, uh, and see what we can do. Um, I think, um, and, and, and likely maybe a conversation we need to take offline with, with C D P H E, because we need to make sure that we're meeting the legislative requirements in the act, um. Uh, I mean, that's our, that's the intent of our organization is to be in compliance. So I want to make sure that we're meeting that compliance level that's being asked for. Uh, we do have, you know, as I said, we have this requirement across three states. So um, it does make sense to some extent to make sure that those, those states are aligned, um, so that we're not having to do verification of an end market in two different ways. Um, uh, so potentially if your facility is receiving material from Colorado and Oregon, um, you know, that you're not having to go through two different verification process because Oregon may ask for more uh, than what, uh, than what Colorado does. So we're trying to figure out what the right balance is on that side, but I, I take the point and we'll take it back to think through.
Thanks, Pete. And now to Scott De Five.
Yep, sorry, Scott De Five, Class Packaging Institute, um. I want to make sure that I understand the, the discussion properly here, because what I think I'm hearing is perhaps more a concern with the inter, the ISO nineteen, the ISO standard? At least on some parts than the sinking of responsible end markets and, and then maybe a little bit of what Wolf added created some consternation, but I, I'm not familiar enough with the international auditing stand, ISO standard to, to opine on it, but, um, that wasn't in anybody's state legislative requirements that I know of.
That's an audit requirement to make sure that we've got a, a, a standard for how, how materials are being properly or how the auditor, the verification body is doing the work.
How the auditor's doing a work because ISO standards for the materials don't really apply. Usually agree.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's, it's for the auditor themselves.
Okay.
Okay, to Liz.
Try again. Liz Chapman, Recycle Colorado. My question is related to the multiple states. So on the one hand, I am seeing that it makes a lot of, it, it, it it only makes sense to align the state's verification process as much as possible for exactly the reason you just stated, Peter, that if you are a producer and you are selling into all three states, it doesn't make sense that there are three different processes to go through to verify. On the other hand, the states like Oregon and California are much more densely populated and have a lot higher economic base than what we have here in Colorado. And so my concern is if, what was stated earlier by Scott De Five, if we are holding ourselves to that standard, we are taking on a cost burden that's disproportionate to our consumer base and our economic capacity to handle that. Where does it lie where there is a happy medium where what we've, what verification process we require in Colorado is cost-effective, meets the letter of the law and is also compatible with what's going on in other states?
If I can follow up on that, Liz, just to make sure that, um, uh, make sure that I've, I completely follow. So are, are you suggesting potentially that if there are some smaller end markets in Colorado that are already under permitting and ruled by C D P H E, let's say that, uh, we potentially lean on that requirement, um, instead of
Yes, you, you, you are getting at the heart of exactly what I'm saying.
Okay. So that's something, that's something definitely we can, we can take back and, and, and have a look at. It, it obviously that may make sense for some smaller players, uh, for larger players that may be taking materials from other states. And that may not make sense if, if they've got to rely on a verification from to, to accept material from other jurisdictions, uh, those two specifically that, that are in play at least right now. But let, let me take that back and, and think about.
Okay, to Barrett next.
Yeah, Barrett Jensen, Waste Connections. I've been kicked out about ten times on my internet, so if I'm asking a question that's already asked, I apologize. Um, so on the previous slide, Peter, it was talking about that, you know, keeping in mind significant, you know, cost or cost as a significant consideration. Do you know what those costs kind of look like? And were those part of the needs assessment? Were those assumed in there? And then I did have a second question that I can do after.
Um, yeah, uh, yeah, I think we're trying to find ways to make this, uh, as simple as possible. Um, some of these, uh, costs, when we look at them, uh, Barrett would be, would be taken into account in, uh, the fact that, uh, S C A is operating across multiple states. Um, many of these markets maybe need to be verified for players in, you know, all three or, or maybe two of the states. Um, so, um, I think that's built into some of our broader costs, um, and it would have been built in, I think, on the administrative costs on the, on the needs assessment. Um, um, but I can, I can follow up, uh, to, to look at that specifically.
Okay, thank you. And then I just, I, I missed a portion of the beginning of this, but is there, it would be kind of nice to kind of go through what's in statute on this because um, it would be, I mean, is there any type of like flexibility with existing end markets compared to new markets, kind of like what, um, what Wolf was talking about? Um, where there, there's kind of more of a, you know, an eye on, you know, people coming into new markets, but you know, the existing markets, I mean, are we just creating a, a burden for them? Or are we just looking at the new markets coming in?
Uh, the legislation doesn't say anything about new markets or, or existing markets, um, uh, so I think as I would look at it, uh, there's a, there's a requirement on the pro to make sure that, uh, we we, we, we ensure that, um, that whatever materials, wherever they're going are being, are being transferred to responsible end market. Now look, existing markets, um, uh, maybe doing a lot of this stuff currently already, um, uh, they have been operated for a number of years. So I think as we would look at audits that may need to be done of those, of those entities, we, we may not need to do them, uh, as frequently as potential other markets because we know that there's, um, you know, there's a, there's a legacy piece that's fit into that. So that would look, I think, fit into some of the risk bases as to, you know, looking at, um, audits of when we would be looking at audits for different types of, uh, types of end markets.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Barrett. To Rick.
Rick Cater, uh, Swordfish Consulting, MRFs. I wanted to agree with Scott De Five that, uh, harmonization is a wonderful thing if we can all agree on what harmonization is and what levels. California would love us to harmonize with them because their, their bar is going to be so high that it's going to impede markets for them. So if ours is not as high, those, and those mill groups and buyers will be more inclined to use our, our, uh,
Our, uh, source, us as a source of materials than they would California. So there's a big reason why they want us to harmonize with them, and I I don't disagree with harmonizing. As long as it doesn't, uh, put us at a, we don't become a mill desert or a buyer desert because our. Standards are so high that none of the end markets can work with us. Um, so there's where I go. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Rick, and I think we've tried to do that. I think we have tried to look at, um, and and I know that, uh, Scott initially brought up the. Example of, uh, are we talking about the reclamer or the converter? Um, and so we are, we are looking at at tracing to the, to the reclamer, uh, of the, um. Uh, of the material, um. Uh, not the converter, um, so that's one, uh, difference that we're taking, but when we look at. Initial screening, the type of reporting that would be required and then selective audits. I think we'd be looking at something that may make sense to do across multiple jurisdictions, and I think that's why we're proposing it. It's not about trying to create something that's too restrictive. It's meant to. Look at it to say, how do we make sure that there's more confidence? Uh, in the markets of how materials are being managed, uh, moving forward.
And four, thank you.
And so some of that heavy lifting for the initial outreach. Maybe higher at the beginning and then really start to tail itself off, uh, once we've, once we've, uh, you know, received initial screening from. Uh, from, uh, those initial facilities. Obviously, markets will change over time, but but a lot of these markets have pretty stable players that are within them.
Okay, thanks Pete. Is there, do you have any other slides there or additions for this section?
I I don't. I think the last section may be one that requires more time than others, so, um.
Unless there's any other questions from the advisory board, we will open up to public comment again. Okay, if you are interested in providing public comments, please submit your name and organization in the chat. We will call on attendees in the order the requests were received. Since we have limited time, we will allow two minutes for each comment. We encourage commenters to focus on topics discussed during the meeting. As a reminder, public comment is for feedback only. If you have questions, please submit them to. EPR comments at state.co.us.
And we'll wait a moment to see if anyone's gonna enter anything into the chat and then call.
Okay, so. Before we move on to our next. Topic and our final topic, we'll take a five minute break. If there are any comments that come up. During this time, we will address them before beginning the next topic. And the five minute break will begin now. Okay. Welcome back, everyone. We're now going to move on to the final topic of today's technical working session. Cost reimbursement formula. Pete, the mic is yours.
Perfect, thanks. Uh, next slide over, um. So just, just a reminder, uh, there is a requirement, uh, that, uh, we include reimbursement rates for. Hundred percent of net recycling service costs, uh, of the recycling services provided by service providers. Uh, under the program consistent with convenient standards. Uh, and that the reimbursement rates be calculated on an objective cost or formulas, incorporate the relevant cost information identified in the needs assessment. Be calculated on some type of unit basis, um. Uh, take into account many of the things that we discussed as part of the needs assessments of density. Uh, number of households, uh, collection methods, revenues generated, uh, inbound contamination. Uh, describe a process to evaluate and revise the cost formulas and include a schedule of reimbursement rates for service providers that elect to participate. Um, in the, uh, in the program plan. Uh, next slide over. Uh, so I think we talked about this, uh, yesterday. I've tried to just, or at our last meeting, I've tried to, uh, just sort of summarize a little bit. Obviously, there are different. Uh, considerations around how reimbursement may be provided. Uh, so we have municipally delivered service, uh, municipally, uh, contracted, uh, through a third party. We have household subscriptions that might be based on a municipally approved, uh, list. Uh, household subscriptions more in a sort of open market format. And then we have some households that may not have access to servicing at this time. Um, the service being provided, uh, by, uh, recyclers may be different, so the collection that they're providing, is it curbside or depot? Is it single stream or dual stream? What are the materials that are collected? Um, uh, the processing, how processing is is provided, uh, again, single stream, dual stream. Uh, is it, uh, what are the materials that are currently, uh, 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 processed at that facility? Um, what are the contamination rates of the materials that are being deposited? Uh, and then separately, there is, um, uh, promotion education, uh, that's provided, and that. Service may be provided a little bit differently between the type of residence, so single family versus multifamily and different potentially curbside. Or depot. Uh, there are also other conditions to take into account, uh, so some of those are geographic or demographic type considerations, population density. Uh, the types of roads, we had lots of information about that within the, uh. Within the, um, uh, needs assessment, you know, when we start to get into some of the mountain region and and some of the difficulties you have with. Uh, with roads in that area that impacts travel times and wear and tear on vehicles. Uh, you have gen- generation rates that will impact, um, uh, so potentially the difference between urban and and rural. Uh, areas, uh, you have some seasonality types of differences as well, where we talk about, uh, uh, more sort of tourism areas. Where you get spikes in, uh, in, uh. Uh, in needs, uh, at certain times in the year. And then you have some, and I've just sort of stated them more or less like market realities. You have things that shift, um, uh, fuel. Uh, labor cost, things that would fit under, under, uh, the consumer price index type of side of things, and then you have. Uh, material markets that will fluctuate on an ongoing basis. And I'll stop there just broadly to say, are there, are there any? Other major areas that folks think we've missed when we talk about considerations in in pricing? Rick?
The only thing I couldn't see was, uh, and I'm sure we're going to get into that soon, is the dynamic associated with cost of goods, rebating. Um, uh, so I know you're. You're speaking to how the Murph is compensated, but the Murph in an effort to get materials has to go out and source materials. And at certain market levels has to pay for materials, including single stream. So just consideration of how that might look in a. In a very mature market where our blended value is very high. Okay?
Yeah, so volume material that you're processing within that facility. So if you're processing less material, there's a higher cost to process that material. Is that? Am I, am I capturing that right, Rick?
No, I mean, you're, uh, I believe you are implying that you're going to pay the Murfs. Th- this is just talking about the Murfs right now. You can pay the recycling center, uh, cost, uh, net of of material sales. And part of the process or part of our cost is the cost of. Of of getting goods, so we have to pay for materials sometimes and. Want you to be aware that in that reimbursement dynamic, we would have. There would be, are you going to compensate us for our having to go out and cover the cost of buying materials to bring it into our facility?
Okay, and by buying materials, just so I'm clear on that, is that buying materials that are? Eligible materials or is this, uh, is this potentially? Commercial materials that may not be covered in the program?
Well, uh, and if I were to go to depot kind of, uh, there are depot materials that. That, um, that a a provider may bring that may be worth, that are on the materials recyclables list. But but have value, and you're going to pay them to bring that material into your plant. Similar to what Scott DeFice is as a middle processor is doing, he. There were times he's paying for material to come in his plant, and that is a cost of doing business. So does that make sense, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's the overall cost of running your facility.
Right, if you're going to extract, uh, scrap materials. From my cost and pay me what's left over, if that's some of, some of the thought process that's going on. I need to be reimbursed for the cost associated with getting that material.
Okay.
Any other questions at this stage? Pete, you.
Yeah, if we just move into the next slide. Um, so we talked about this and I did provide some sort of visuals as the last time, but you know, I think bottom line is. When we talk about packaging materials. Most other jurisdictions, Canadian and European. Uh, that are operating these programs, provide a cost formula that's really based on. Uh, reported municipal data. Or a competitive bid process, so they'll provide actual verified costs, let's say to. A depot, uh, that will be based on. Uh, verified information that they receive from that, uh, municipal government as the cost, uh, to operate that with. A facility. Or, uh, the cost potentially that have been tendered out. Uh, they do as well do to some degree, uh, defined, uh, reimbursement rates, so they can look at. Uh, the cost per household, um, or per ton to run a depot or. Uh, per ton for for processing. Those costs are typically, uh, either based on, uh, market research, uh, that's done. Um, uh, to understand the marketplace or be based on comparable tenders that may have happened within that area. Uh, so they'll base those, that reimbursement, that defined rate. And what you'll often see is that, again, they'll look at, if they were talking about collection costs, they'll look at similar municipalities. Uh, or similar jurisdictions, uh, both rural, um, um, or whatever type of geographic considerations might make sense for that. Uh, for that jurisdiction. Or they based it on a competitive bid process, uh, so that that can either be handled by the pro potentially itself or potentially by. Uh, the, um. Uh, by a municipality that does, that holds the competitive bid process on behalf of, uh, on behalf of the pro. Uh, typically, in most of those jurisdictions, they do separate out. Collection, collection usually sits under one price and then hauling and process will separate out under a separate price. Um, uh, so there's collection and then there's post-collection that are usually handled separately. That's typically the way that most of those, uh, most other jurisdictions operate. Promotion education rates are typically done on a per household basis. So there is a a cost that's provided on a per household basis, uh, to municipalities in order to, um. In order to provide, uh, promotion education to their residents or potentially the the service provider providing that, uh. On behalf of their, uh, uh, on behalf of their, the residents that they're servicing. There are other examples of of other reimbursement formulas. For, uh, materials like HHW and tires. We we mentioned it last time, there is another side example for BC. Uh, BC for multi-residential collection, they offered an incentive rate. Um, for collection of those materials, um, but they did require that. A collection of those materials was done on a, on a dedicated route, so. Uh, those service providers wouldn't be allowed to collect from commercial businesses. They would just have to collect from multi-residential buildings. Um, and then move over, and that did create some issues in in subscription because a lot of routes. Uh, typically that service, uh, multi-residential buildings will be done with. Multi-residential buildings will be done with front-end trucks. And, and usually service providers will want to collect on a more dense route. So they'll look to incorporate both in that route. There are, as I mentioned in the other programs, so there is a collection and transportation rates. That are provided for materials like household hazardous waste and tires. They typically have a geographic map of, of the jurisdiction. And they establish zones within that, within that jurisdiction. And then will apply rates based on, on those geographic zones. They will at times as well differentiate different types of collection types. So I guess if you think about it like, like PPP, they could have different potential collection types. Like, you know, multifamily versus a single family. Or depot that, that could be taken into consideration like that. What they do then is they review those rates periodically. They usually have some type of fuel escalation or CPI factors. That will be attached to them to make sure that they keep pace with, with other factors within the economy. Processing rates are usually done separately in those contracts as well. They usually either contracted out directly or set based on. A consideration around what are the inputs, the types of materials that are being received and the outputs, the commodities that are being supplied. So products that maybe have. That may have been more contaminated, may have less value. Outputs, they may be looking to drive higher value products. So if we're talking about tires, they may provide a different rate for shredded tires versus. Crumb rubber that's processed to a level so they can be put into new products. So they do have different types of rates that are incorporated within those, within those various programs. And I'll just stop right there just to see if there's any specific questions as we talk about how other jurisdictions. Approach the reimbursement side, just to sort of see if there's any questions around how those programs are structured. Rick?
Did you say Rick?
Yes.
Rick Hader, Swordfish Consulting MRFs. So if I'm looking at this, you, you say actual verified costs and then defined reimbursement rate. So what, how, how did these agencies deal with the material revenue? So in, in this case, are you, were you going out and you bid a processing fee? And you kept all material scrap sales? Did you bid a processing fee where the operator subtracted his scrap revenue from his cost? And what was left over was what was paid to the entity? How, what, how, how are they dealing with scrap revenue or material sales?
So Rick, there's a bit of, there is some difference. And I think part of it's a bit of an iteration, I think you're seeing, or I've seen it at least with municipal governments as well over time. Where they talk about how do we balance the risk of commodity markets? And you know, is it a shared model? Are we both sharing some of the risk and some of the potential value that might be associated with it? Or does one entity own all of the, all of the potential risk one way or the other? So we've seen some, there has been some movement towards. The contracts being signed where the pro holds all the risk. So they are required to, they are really paying the process, the processor, the MRF to really. Hit certain specs around how the materials are processed, the end, end market commodities. So it's really more like a tolling type of a fee that they're paying for those facilities. There has been some concern, I think, by certain players who don't want that type of approach. So some of the private sector doesn't like that approach. And so there is other, other types of contracting that are done slightly differently. But again, a lot of the, what we're talking about is generally done on a, on a, on a competitive procurement basis. Where those contracts are put out into the, into the, into the market and, and players will bid on them accordingly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does that cover your question?
Sort of, I mean, later I'll, we'll drill down a little bit more. I'm sure you have some more stuff to talk about.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I will keep moving then as we, as we go forward, next slide over. So I want to talk about some different types of considerations that, that get taken into account. So we know that as we talked about earlier, that we do have some municipally delivered or municipally contracted servicing. That is currently being done right now. And so I think my first question is, is really about what considerations does CA need to take into account? For the type of data availability, the contract amendments that may need to be taken. Whether there's bundled servicing, if we were to provide funding back to municipalities based on actual verified costs. So the cost that, that that municipality may be paying for their servicing right now for collection and processing of materials. Or if they were to look at a, a, a competitive bid process, if they are nearing the end of their contract.
Mark or Barrett, as service providers, it'd be great to get your thoughts here.
Yeah, thank you, Mark Petrovich with Republic Services. I was just going to raise my hand. Thank you, Megan. So, Peter, the. That question, like when it's, when it's bundled servicing, so the contracts are separate, right? So the, the, the cost the municipality pays is for the service of collecting the material. It's not the, the processing at a MRF is a separate P and L, right? That's a separate piece that we just addressed and we'll probably get into a little later. But so the cer- the, the cost that the municipality is paying is for the service.
So when you say the service, you mean the collection service?
The service of like removing, moving the material.
Okay.
So for collection, right? So and the cities are aware and they, and they know, right? So there would be contract amendments, they've had questions about how does the reimbursement work? Is it goes straight to the service provider? Does it go to through the, through the municipality? The servicing is bundled, that's how cities like to see it. They want one price to their constituents, but haulers can break that down of what their costs to serve are. So that, that number could be provided. So I just wanted to make it clear that the, the, the MRF, right? The processing and what's going on there and how that payment is done, whether it's with a net or if you're sharing risk and sharing benefit of commodity. Or how that structured is separate from what the municipality is, is paying.
And, and Mark, if I can follow up, so, so in most contracts for municipalities, when I talk about bundled, is it? Is disposal and, and, and recycling and potentially organics all included as one price? When you're going out with any trucks, it's all one price?
Yeah, generally, so we have several contracted cities. Several of them have one rate that is just, it could be trash and recycle. Or it could be trash, recycle and organics. I'm trying to go off a memory, Lafayette was one city where they had a separate price for organics. But they've changed that, so pretty much everything is bundled, would have to be broken down by commodity. When it comes to reimbursement, because the cities don't want, it gets confusing to constituents. And they want one price that covers all waste streams.
Is there a rule of thumb that can generally be applied?
Rule of thumb pertaining to what?
Cost to servicing, when it comes to the split between, let's say, recycling and disposal, if it's bundled together?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, you build that in a financial model. I mean, we know what it costs to move a truck with employee, that kind of stuff, and then disposal cost. Trip time, distance traveled, water sewer trash index for annual rate increases. So yeah, there's a, there's a rule of thumb that we follow through a financial model. Some of that is dictated by how the city wants to see it displayed to them. But like I said, the majority of it is bundled.
And, and if I could ask just one, one additional follow-up, is, is just. When we talk about, so that, these are contracts that are currently in place. As we move forward. There may be some additional requirements that are needed by CA. And I think we, we've talked about a few of them. So if we need to make sure that we're getting verification around where materials are going. A bit of additional tracking, how easy for, is it for contracts to be changed? To be able to take into account, if they were to take into account some of those additional requirements?
So currently the contracts, they only go so far as to. The, the recycling or organics needs to go to a reci- a, a licensed facility. Licensed and approved and permitted facility. Lafayette and Lewisville are the only cities that actually flow control their recycling to go to the Boulder County Recycling Center. But that's as deep as those contracts go, they don't go into, they want to know where that material goes beyond. They don't, they're not asking where on the open market and commodity market, they're selling this material to an end user. It doesn't get that deep.
Okay, thank you.
And to Rick next?
Yeah, so I never like to correct folks, but actually Lafayette and Louisville do have access to the end markets. That Boulder uses if, if asked and we do share that information with them back and forth. So that we, there is that kind of communication. Back to bundling, we've mentioned this in the beginning. A little MRF like Boulder or small little municipality MRFs are grossly disadvantaged. When they come up against the big guys like Waste Management and Republic who can bundle and discount. So in the old days, and they probably are still doing this. But they would discount hauling to pick up the recycling or discount the recycling to pick up the hauling. And if you don't decouple those, then the smaller operators at a gross disadvantage. And we can't, we then have to partner with westerners and, and, and we're not aligned. We can't go EBITDA, we have to make, we have to live. So just wanted to say that bundling, although sounds great in the private sector and does save money in some instances. It does have, it is positioned to disadvantage smaller MRFs or unintegrated, non-integrated operators. That don't have a landfill, don't have hauling and only have a processing facility.
Thanks, Rick.
To Barrett next?
Yeah, Barrett Jensen, Waste Connections. So I will say that bundling is typically what we see in Colorado as well. What we typically do, but I did want to ask a question. So I mean, we, I'd prefer, right, that, that to contract the municipalities. I, I like that idea better. I'm wondering what the approach is, and if you've seen it in other jurisdictions to HOAs, there are a ton of HOAs in Colorado. And so what's the plan there? Similar, like contract amendments, what's, what's, just curious?
So if we look at other jurisdictions, Barrett bluntly, we don't have a lot of examples of HOAs in the other jurisdictions. So typically that's the big difference, I think, when we're talking about packaging for EPR. We're generally talking about jurisdictions like Canada and Europe that have moved forward with packaging laws. Generally, it, within all of those jurisdictions, the municipal government is generally providing. The, the service to residential entities. The exception, the slight exception is, is multi-residential buildings. For which then it's slightly different and that, that's sort of reflected, I think, in that example that was provided by Recycle BC. Where they were providing an incentive rate as a different way to manage that.
Scott, over to you?
Scott DeFiveGlass Packaging, I think Rick made some, some good points that I was gonna mention. The only other thing I'll, I'll say is that sometimes the bundling and the rates and the contracts that I've seen in the past five years. Also often include. Ownership or, or, or exclusivity on marketing the commodity material. And that also has provided a discount to the municipality when everything that's in the bin becomes the. The property of the, that who is collecting the, the material. And I guess the other question is. Are we, how soon are we going to be out of the generation of contracts that was done during the China Sword era? Typical length of contracts that we see in Colorado, because I think you may be entering a new generation of contracts. Once the, the EPR pro plan is, is, is out. And then I saw the bullet on districting, but I didn't know if we were that part of the conversation yet.
We, we weren't, I was, I guess I was, I was slowly making my way through the questions, but, but we can, we can skip if you wanted to, to comment on that side.
Since I have the mic. I, I mean, obviously, you're going, the districting. You know, that's an efficiency issue that needs to be addressed that I think we all talked about on a previous, a previous call. Doesn't make sense to have multiple trucks going down the same street in certain districts. So I, I think you have to take that into account when you're getting the new generation of contracts going.
And what's the best way that you think to approach that? Scott, do you have thoughts on that?
Bid, you know, open, you know, it's like a bidding process. If the, the county, if I underst- if I remember the law, you know, the Colorado law correctly. The, the municipality or the county in this particular instance, and I'm sure my colleagues from the municipalities and the counties will correct me if I get it wrong. They have the opportunity to partake, to participate as a provider or not. If, if they opt out, then the PRO has to come in with a service plan for the, for the population that's being serviced by the. The municipality that's decided to opt out of being the service provider. If they want in to continue to maintain, you know, some control of the, who's providing the service in their area, then they need to meet the. The obligations that the, the pro sets forth. So I would think in the areas, you know, as you can, there needs to be some sort of. You know. You're probably going to need a whole nother discussion just on this, but how to roll out changes to the districting. You know, and the bidding process, you know, for jurisdictions that are, are, make a decision. The jurisdiction needs to make a decision whether they're in or they're out. Of being the, the interim, you know, of being the, the go-between here. And then the PRO is going to have to come in with the service, but it's probably worthy of a whole nother separate conversation. Separate meeting.
Thanks, Scott. Gail?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Gail, Gary, Steamboat Springs City Council. And I guess I would just echo what Scott said and reinforce that. Because I think as we look at municipalities, it's handled, you know, very differently across the state. In terms of whether you have the municipality that's offering the service. Or in my community, we have three different private haulers. There is an ordinance in our instance where we do required bundled trash and recycling. But I think you're going to see that vary from community to community. So again, it's going to be very specific and specific in terms of, is it the municipality? Is it a franchise? Are there licenses? Are there ordinances? You know, when we certainly start, start talking about, I think what Scott was mentioning, whether it's districting and like a single hauler. You know, those are issues that can get, you know, fairly complicated when you're dealing at a municipal level. In terms of having existing providers already, you know, in the market. So just how we, you know, would maneuver that and determine kind of what's the most effective and efficient approach? I think making sure that we've kind of got all of the information and have those conversations will be important. In terms of devising a system that's most economic and efficient for all of those concerned.
Thanks, Gail. Next, Gail.
And Gail to Barrett.
Uh Barrett Jensen Waste Connections. So I guess, you know, it it just depends on what you mean on districting. Um you know, I think that if you're going through municipalities, um you're essentially doing that. Um and allowing them to kind of have that control on what their system, you know, kind of looks like and how they do it. Um another way to look at it is maybe uh municipalities as far as incorporated versus unincorporated, maybe another way to look at it as well. Um but I think, you know, if you just say, hey, we've got front range district, um. I would not be spoilt of that. Uh it's just too big. Um it just can't be all encompassing like that, which is why I think that the district is really should be to municipality.
Thanks, Barrett. Um yeah, I I mean, Mark had brought it up uh last time. I certainly uh take the point that um. There is. Sometimes benefits in larger areas potentially being procured, but there is definitely um. Risk that that huge risk that potentially comes as you go out with bigger. If you've got a problem, it becomes a very, very big problem. If you've got a large area tendered out, so uh definitely uh uh take the point on that. I think this was really just a pickup of. Of the last conversation to say, you know, uh there seemed to be some interest in this one. So uh was there, was there specific thinking about how it might be approached?
Right, over to Caroline.
Caroline Mitchell, City of Fort Collins, um and I. Apologize if I'm repeating something in here. I'd gotten the call from my kiddo's school, so I had to step away for a few minutes there. Um. I guess we still have some time left in the meeting here, but this is such a big topic, and so I'm just maybe also putting a flag in that this. We we may need some more time to talk about this too. Um. I think the. One of the real pickles in Colorado is that the open market system is. Not efficient and it is the baseline in pretty much every community. And changing from that baseline takes a huge amount of work and so just as a sort of a. One example, um here in Fort Collins, um. The city council had made it a priority to consider um shifting to from a licensed open market. To contracted hauling and um even with that sort of political direction and support. It was a year and a half long process um that, you know, in required a ton of staff time and. Um was involved a huge amount of community engagement and it's a a topic that really, really, really sets off. The perspectives of whether of the appropriate role of government. And so it can create some real tensions and fights in the community and bring out the. You know, as our council had said from previous times, considering this, all the the pitchforks and the torches arrive when you bring up contracted hauling. Um Fort Collins had considered it twice before in nineteen ninety eight and two thousand eight, and both times did not move forward with it. So I. I I'm interested in in sort of participating in the a conversation around if there are incentives that would provide an incentive for. Municipalities to move in that direction. But um. It's it we're, it it's just, it's a really. Big political and staff time um investment to make that change from open market to contracted. And so. Um I just don't want anybody to underestimate that in case folks aren't familiar with sort of the dynamics in the Colorado systems and um. And I. And it's just tricky because the local governments, you know, they're not going to be paying for the recycling costs either way, so. Not that costs are the only driver in the system, but you know, the the incentives. It it's a really steep ask in communities and at least in our existing system, there's not a whole lot of incentive um. For municipalities to do anything other than open market. So. Perhaps I'm just restating the obvious to this big challenge, um but I'm happy to answer any specifics. I've I've been part of. Single hauler conversations and transitions in um Louisville and Lafayette when they first converted over to it and then also in Fort Collins. So happy to be a resource to whatever level that's helpful.
So so that is helpful, Carolyn, and um I want to be, I want to be really clear on this. Um. We know this is a tricky, uh this is a tricky part uh of of the of the program plan. Uh this is not. Th- this is, this conversation is one I'm sure we'll have many more of uh as this moves forward. Um I think the intention right now is largely about saying. Here's some big picture issues that we've got that we need to try to tackle. Um we want to get early feedback as part of it to say, how might we deal with it? Uh so um. Uh you know, we're trying to lean on this advisory board to say. Lots of, uh obviously lots of work that's been done previously. How can we potentially look at it as to how C A approaches us that might? Add value uh that might allow for some some additional efficiencies to happen within the overall system. So. Uh there will be more conversations on this, so don't don't feel like this is the last opportunity to speak on this, and I'll hand it over to Liz.
Liz Chapman, Recycle Colorado. Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Caroline. I second your. Uh sentiments on this being a big sticky wicket to wade our way through. And a couple of the. Points I wanted to make and then some questions. One of the points I wanted to make is that in this uh question. There's a supposition that it's all municipality based. And there's huge swaths of Colorado that are not municipalities, they're unincorporated counties and counties. To my knowledge, we don't have any counties that district or contract for waste services, the way. Of municipality might, and and I could be wrong, there might be one or two, but it is very rare. The vast majority, even if there's an exception to the rule, the vast majority of the unincorporated counties. Don't pursue any type of contracting, nor are they interested in doing it. And. You're the question on the slide where it says, might there be interests for other municipal governments to provide or contract for servicing? I certainly do not speak for all municipalities throughout Colorado. But I can share with you in my conversations with multiple, both uh multiple jurisdictions at the city level and the county level. Very few, if any, have any interest in providing services, even if. The pro were to buy the trucks and to pay for a building to house the trucks, even if there was zero financial. Incumbrance upon that local jurisdiction, they have zero interest in getting into. The sanitation business unless they already have it, is what I've heard. From all the jurisdictions I've had this type of conversation with. So I don't think there is an incentive out there that would lead a community that doesn't currently provide service. Into wanting to provide service. It and if there is, it's gonna be just a smattering, a handful. The contracting services, contracting for services. Taking into account everything Caroline said, which is accurate and comports with all the conversations. Again, I haven't spoken with every. Jurisdiction in Colorado, but all the municipalities that I have spoken with, the ones that are interested in it. Are are not wholeheartedly interested in it. So I don't see a scenario. That the all of Colorado goes to providing. Through municipal or jurisdictional contract and then the pro reimburses the jurisdiction. I would foresee that there will be a mix of what you had on the slide a couple slides back. Where some jurisdictions, it will be based on a reimbursement of actual costs because they're contracted out. And then in other places, there will be a formula based. On the jurisdiction and based on the costs in that area, like it'll be different on the eastern plains versus the mountain towns versus the front range. But there will be some formula that private providers will then invoice the P R O for. And my question is. Is the contract, is is the P R O thinking that they will go out to bid? And contract directly with service providers in the circumstances where the municipality. Or the county does not want to contract. Long-winded way of getting at that question.
Yeah, so I think Liz, I think that's a question that we haven't answered yet. I think that's a question that we need to figure out. Uh whether uh there is an opportunity for that um and whether that makes sense. We we will need. Um contracts to some extent with. Any entity that we're working with, because we have to ensure that the materials are being properly tracked. Um we will need to ensure that um they're meeting the requirements of the regulation, health and safety, environmental. All the other attributes that are as part of that. So we will need some level of agreement with. Those entities. Uh that doesn't mean that it cannot be simply an agreement, you know, and then a a reimbursement that's being provided, but. We'll need some level of 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 agreement with whatever parties that we are working with. Is that helpful? Okay.
Okay, over to Gail.
Thank you, Gail. Gary City of Steamboat Springs City Council, and I think Peter, maybe you just answered that. I was gonna, I guess, do a follow up question that. Again, in the instances where you have municipalities that have, we have, you know, private haulers, multiple different private haulers in the municipal municipality. Or even, you know, in the unincorporated counties, what would be the alternative to not contracting? With those individual haulers.
Uh so uh we need to have, uh we need to include as part of this a reimbursement formula. Uh that would be put in place now. Um we need to figure out the best way to uh uh put that in place. And as I mentioned. When it comes to packaging, there's not a lot of other examples that are out there um as to how they're doing it. A lot of it is direct contracting. Um so and and Liz, I know you mentioned as well the fact that this slide does, it just, it's just focused on the municipally delivered and contracted. There's another slide after this that deals with um unserviced or subscription based. Uh which which starts to get into some other questions of of how we would address those others. I I sort of saw a separation between one that's really procured uh service and the other. Uh so I think we're looking at making sure that we cover uh both both sides of 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 uh that. Um uh but again, there is definitely some. Uh some more uh obstacles that we need to figure out how to achieve when we're just simply providing a a reimburse reimbursement formula. You know, and again, that gets into. If a private hauler is is running a route and they're collecting from eligible and non-eligible. Uh or or covered and non-covered entities, how do we make sure that we're only? Um. We're only paying for those materials that are covered and we're only accounting for, because we've got a, we've got to show how we're. Meeting the targets within the act, so we can only account for the collected materials that are from covered entities, not those that are from unco- or uh. Non-covered entities. So there's a bunch of hurdles that we need to make sure are covered in those uh in those contracts and how that can be achieved. Scott?
Over to you, Scott.
Um yes, Scott to five glass back. I that that was gonna be what I was gonna say next is, A, I remember in the debate in passing the law, there was a whole bunch of. Jurisdictions that had zero interest in in doing this and they were ready for the P R O to form so that somebody could. You know, contract with somebody to provide those services. In in reacting to what Peter just said. If some of the service providers don't like the. Don't like the rates and the proposals that the P R O puts forward, they may decide to get out of servicing covered entities. And shift to non-covered entities. So I mean, it's. The this, the law changed the system, this is, I mean, you know, everything, the 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 base level model is changing. I mean, that's part of what the creation of the law is in the first place. The only other thing I had on my mind was I could envision a situation, maybe I'm just making it up in my brain. Where there is a municipally serviced territory right next door. To a unincorporated area that doesn't have any service and the P R O could find that. If that municipally serviced territory is just is not. Completely full or isn't optimized to its fullest, you know, or has an extra day on its hand or something like that, then you could. You could maybe go grab those guys that are right next door to you and pull them in under your service rather than go through an entire bidding process. But that's about the only thing that I could imagine. Uh a municipally serviced contract expanding, right? Anyway, I'll I'll stop. I think I think we're headed for a whole separate. Meeting on.
And just on that, I do want to flag that we have just under an hour left, so we do have lots of time to delve into anything that is coming up. Um acknowledging it is a big topic and we can't do it in fifty five minutes, but we do have, we do have a lot of time. Caroline?
Caroline Mitchell, City of Fort Collins. Again, I'm sorry that I had to step away for a couple phone calls, so I if I apologize if this was already answered. Um. Peter, can you tell me a little bit more of what you mean by districting in the third bullet?
So uh. I mean, this was largely based on Mark's comments, and I hate to put Mark on the spot. Uh this was largely based on his comments from the last, which was saying. We should be doing a lot more districting and that might be an option. Um so. Uh I I think, you know, it was brought up as part of the conversation um in the last meeting and so. Uh I wanted to just make sure that that was being reflected. There seemed to be some agreement. Um. I know that districting can be used in different ways and mean different things to different people, so. I don't know, Mark, do you want to talk about at least where you were coming from when 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 that initially came up?
Sure, uh so Mark Petrovich Republic Services Ed. Oh, sorry. So. The the point behind districting really runs uh right in lockstep with what Caroline was talking about a few minutes ago. How long she has been involved in this and the process to get a city to contract. Is very long and can be very contentious. Um and so I brought up districting as a. Alternative to contracting to where you can gain efficiencies. On the collection for haulers, right? Because the open market of subscription type collection is very inefficient and very. Uh expensive. And so districting uh is an alternative to actually. A city moving towards a single hauler contract, right? That's a way for them to carve up the city. And i- and if those sections or districts were bid upon. Uh by service providers, um then you could go about it that way. Um but it's a little different than contracting. So it's just an alternative to gain efficiencies. Um because. I agree with Caroline, if you're looking at a lot of cities that would be. Looking at a proposal to to contract, that takes a quite some time. I can't remember the dates that Caroline gave, but Fort Collins. Who is a very progressive city, it's taken them quite some time to get to where they actually will have a contracted uh waste collection system.
Can I ask M- Mark a question directly? So Mark, are you with with the system of districting that you're talking about? Are you saying a municipality would have contracts, like say you have three haulers in your community right now? Is it saying that you would um have contracts with those three haulers, but that you would sort of. Set up a a district or a section of the community for each of them? Is that, is that what you're meaning? I I just heard people use the term districting to mean a lot of different things, so I guess I'm trying to get to sort of a finer granularity of like. What exact system are you referring to by districting?
Yeah, so districting, um I have never done it. It's not, it's not here in Colorado, okay? But I know that I have peers that do that in a in a city. Could divide itself up into districts, right? And then they bid those out. So you could have three or four or five different haulers. Depending on the size of the city, servicing, let's say Aurora, very large city. You could have four haulers and they're servicing and they all have the district that they serve, right? And as opposed to Aurora or like Fort Collins going to a single hauler that does all of the work. Um that's just um an alternative to cities. Um, that's just um, an alternative to cities that. It may be a little more palatable to them, because one of the pushbacks I see in a lot of cities that are looking or entertaining, going from open market. To contracted is they feel that it's a monopoly and they take away the competitive landscape. That's not actually factual. Right? There is no more competitive of a landscape than when a city goes out to bid. But that's the perception of city leadership and uh, city constituents. And so. That's just an alternative that could be a little more palatable. And it, in all transparency, I know of it, I have never done it here in Colorado. Never had a city be interested in it. Everything I've done personally with Republic has been single hauler contract, so.
Thank you, Mark, and I don't know if I can finish the thought here. Um, so. Still Caroline Mitchell, City of Fort Collins, um. When Fort Collins had considered contracted hauling in two thousand eight. The proposed path was to do districted, districted collection. Um, and the city had put together a pilot in one quarter of the city. Um, but then there was a lot of pushback on sort of the approach in general, so it wasn't actually implemented, but. In this, in, when Fort Collins was um, considering moving to contracted hauling, again, this time. There was an assumption, it was actually called districting at the beginning of the project, when council had asked us to do the work. And there was an assumption that that sort of districted approach would be the approach that would make the most sense. Um. When I started the project, there were three. Prime, there were three residential haulers in Fort Collins. And so I actually did a fair amount of work to look at a potential for a districted approach. And um, I found that while it felt very logical to. Residents and decision makers, when I actually got into the details of it, I couldn't think of a way. I couldn't find a way that it would make sense, um. From the perspective, well, there. I guess I should say the challenges that I found were. You know, if you have in this, in the instance of Fort Collins, if you have three residential haulers. All of whom have a different level of market share coming into the process. There is a line of logic that would say you should just. Divide up the community more efficiently, but have everyone maintain that same market share. Um, but you have to determine the pricing for that to happen and. In the um. In that sort of a situation, it felt like it would really undercut the price impacts of, of. Doing, you know, of, of combining everything and, and essentially going out to bid. And then we also thought about, well, maybe we make three districts, but there maybe one is like sixty percent of the community, one is thirty percent, one is. Twenty, well, you know, whatever the math comes out to be. Divide them up. So there's some incentive. And you put out the bids and, but then again, we got into the logistics of like, you can't. I don't think you can hold one company to another company's proposal. And your proposal is based on the number of households in the area that you would be servicing and. And I'm happy to get into more of the logistics if it's helpful for anybody, but the bottom line is that when I really sort of talked through it all with our purchasing folks and. Um, other experts, I couldn't find a way to move forward in a districted approach. That didn't incentivize being the second or third highest bidder. Which kind of defeats the purpose and you still get more efficiencies, but. Um. In my experience, districting feels more logical. Than it was on the ground in the ways that we were proceeding it. Which maybe just puts more wrenches into the conversation here, but maybe at least to bring folks along on the thought processes that we had around it.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, it's Rick Hader, Swordfish Consulting, MERS. Uh, California, I think they refer to it as franchising. Um, but they've been doing this for forever. And uh, like LA broke up into like four or five areas and they bid out each of those areas. And each had a different dynamic, like a different socio-economic position, which uh. Which impacted the bidding of each of those zones, but I, but I think it's pretty, a pretty common thing. Uh, it's been on, they've been doing it for quite a while. I know we're in open market here. But I think when, when free comes into the discussion, I think uh, a lot of people will move. Uh, in the direction, and I, I do think that um, C A A needs to be reflective of their costs. And uh, they have to zone, they zone it out so that they get economics. Uh, of scale out of uh, their bidding. Um, so it's difficult, but I think it's doable.
Thanks, Rick. Any other thoughts on, yeah, sorry.
Oh, good. I know that you've got a couple of slides left, so. Unless there's any other thoughts?
Yeah, why don't we move to the next slide? Um, so this, the next slide gets into the sort of unsubscription, I'm sorry. Unserved or, or subscription based areas. Um. And so as we look at the reimbursement formula, and I think this fits to some degree a little bit, um. Uh, Rick, with the questions uh, that you were asking earlier is, are we separating out some of the components? So are we separating out collection uh, from potentially post-collection, so consolidation, hauling and processing? Um, does that make sense for us to separate the two of them out? Given the fact that we may have different requirements associated with different parts of that system? And then how do we set out the rates that should be established? Do we look at comparable rates? Do we look at an industry assessment? Is there another type of process around the formula that should be considered? I'll get to the last piece after that, but I think maybe if I can start uh, there, if there's thoughts on. How potentially to look at that formula for, again, the subscription based or the unserved areas?
Rick, over to you.
I, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't gonna focus on just uh, uh, on subscription base. I, I was gonna speak to the whole on the, but. But it, I, it goes back to my initial question on whether or not you were gonna uh, pay for services net of material sales. And because uh, that formula, we should be looking at that, that methodology. So that we can fund some of these things that you are speaking of, like uh, equipment replacement. Um, uh, yield improvements and whatnot, so. Are, are you gonna show us a, a model of a granular fee uh, calculator? Uh, with uh, uh, blended value uh, input that then shows us what uh. The baseline fee structure is gonna look like, or, or are you looking for? Like I've built one and I can send it to you and show you what we currently do in the industry? Um, but. Uh, it's, it's a super complicated thing because of the uh, uh, scrap revenue, the material sales piece of it. And it, and it sounds to me like you're getting closer and closer to controlling the end markets. By certifying them and uh, and, and other things and. And things like premiums on our end markets. All of these things affect our cost and our revenue. And I was wondering if you had a model that took that all into consideration and, and you could visually show to us.
Uh, yeah, no, so Rick, I, I don't think there, there, we do not have a model right now on that side. And I think quite bluntly, there, there isn't a model right now that deals with something. I think that's a, a lot of what's in place currently right now is based on. Competitive, competitive pricing and contracts that are put out to the marketplace. That's way, that's the way that processing contracts are generally arrived at. In most jurisdictions, and again, those, those um. Those tenders that will go out will deal with then specifically how. Um. How the uh, commodities are actually dealt with, whether we're talking more of a tolling type of approach. Or whether we're talking potentially of some sort of shared risk uh, basis for those materials. And it sets it out within that contract. And then the uh, the uh, service providers will then bid on that specifically, and that's how the costs are established. Uh, so rather than a formula, it's really based on what market prices are out there. Um, and uh, so uh, yeah, I, I'm certainly interested in, in feedback on your side. As to potentially, what potentially a, a larger formula could look like, or whether there's an ability to look at. Uh, uh, some other type of process where we look at trying to provide it based on market prices that are out.
Sure. Sure, now, uh, uh, what I'm looking for, I, I, what I'm assuming is you're gonna put an R F P out. You're gonna ask for a, a processing fee, we're gonna identify, you're gonna tell us what you think is embedded in that processing fee. My OpEx cost, my current state depreciation, my S G N A. Uh, and my margin probably, you're gonna ask us to embed in that, in that fixed processing fee. And what, what happens in the open market right now is what uh, uh, most of the mercs will do is they'll go, hey. My processing fee is a hundred and fifty dollars. You, the blended value right now is a hundred and twenty-five. You owe me twenty-five dollars a ton as a tip fee, because the blended value of materials coming in doesn't cover my cost. And then I, I was thinking that's the direction you were gonna go, and then we were gonna discuss, okay. Well, how, how are we investing in the capital improvement projects? How are we? Uh, how, how are you getting your revenue outside of the fees? Are you using scrap revenue that you're gonna take? Net of cost, are you gonna use that uh, for some other thing? In the normal world, we would share that with you. So I would, I would be processing if the blended value of my material coming in was one fifty-five. I would share the five dollars with you fifty fifty or twenty-five seventy-five. And we could use those funds to do other things. So I, I was just thinking you'd be getting to that granular level pretty soon. And was hoping maybe in the next technical session, we can actually walk through a model like that.
Yeah, and again, I, I think this depends largely on how we decide to put the formula together, uh, uh, Rick. So I think these, these initial conversations were about trying to figure out how to do that. Um, I mean. Uh, there's different ways that we can evaluate contracts. Uh, when it comes to putting out a, a tender around. Uh, looking for improvements from those facilities over time and the ability to take additional materials and additional. Uh, uh, to process that and, and potentially build. Um, build some of those new investments that potentially might come in over, over time or. Um, so I think there's some ways for us to do that as part of, uh, as part of the, the, uh, the, um. A, a, a competitive contract or competitive uh, uh, bidding process.
Sure, thanks. I'll, I'll go ahead and share the modeling uh, with the group.
That would be great.
The comments.
Over to Mark next.
Yeah, Mark Petrovich, Republic Services. I was just gonna comment on your first bullet, uh, Peter. Should reimbursement rates be separated? And I believe that they should be separated because you have collection. Which is its own entity and then consolidation and hauling a transfer, uh. If that's necessary, right? If it's a, if it's an underserved or subscription, that's an outlier. So you're gonna have a transfer cost, which is gonna be separate, and then you're gonna have processing, just what. Uh, we were just hearing about with the processing, coming up with a formula for that. So I. I believe we should have reimbursement rates separated for those three, those three areas.
Okay, over to Gail. I miss Pete, you had further comments a minute?
No, that's great. Thank you. I was just writing it down.
Okay, great.
muted, alright, Gail, Gary, sorry about that. City Council, Steamboat Springs. Uh, I would just, you know, kind of build on that from the perspective of being in a county that's twenty-five hundred square miles. And has basically four incorporated areas. You know, when you look at collection, certainly from a curbside and a depot perspective, um, there would absolutely be different, different costs in that arena as well.
Okay, thanks for that, Gail.
Sorry, Ga- Gail, just, I, I didn't totally catch that. So, sorry, you're just saying that there's different uh, a collection related costs within your community? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes, I mean, I think certainly from the perspective of when you look at it, when you're thinking about um, unserved or um, subscription based areas. And particularly when you look at a, a community or a county like Route County, I mean, we're a fairly large geographic area, twenty-five hundred square miles. Of which, uh, you know, there's like four or five um, different um, incorporated areas that. Uh, you know, when you look at curbside versus depot, or just when you look, you know, when you look at the costs, right? Those are, they're gonna vary differently, uh, dramatically from whether you're collecting within like Steamboat of, you know, twelve thousand residents. Or you, when you're looking at the unincorporated areas that are outside of the municipal areas.
So your density and your, and your transportation routes are all gonna be fairly different, yeah?
Thank you.
Okay, and to Barrett?
Uh, Barrett Jensen, Waste Connections. Uh, I didn't wanna say that I, I agree, uh, the reimbursement rate should be separated. I mean, whether you're collecting or processing a MRF or to transfer station, those are all different lines of business. Um, also too, I was wondering, and I may be stepping ahead, so um, we don't wanna touch on this right now, that's totally fine. But for capital infrastructure improvements, how, is that reimbursed? Or is that paid for by the pro upfront? How, how is that gonna work? Or is that just a, is that a different topic for, for the future?
No, I think that's, I think that, um, Barrett, I think that somewhat fits into this conversation as well. I mean, there is a question to say. How are we making investments in uh, infrastructure moving forward? Um, and I think there's a question to say, uh, there's different ways potentially we may approach that. That may be potentially something considered directly within um, how. Uh, the reimbursement rates might work. Um, so are we providing higher incentive rates to encourage? Uh, you know, the types of investments that we're talking about, about um, improving yield rates at a MRF. Uh, reducing contamination rates uh, uh, for uh, materials being collected. Like, how can we look at some of those types of, of factors? Is that something that should be built in potentially into the reimbursement rate? So it's more of a kinda market mechanism? Or is it, is it direct funding, or is there, is there another approach potentially that could be looked at as well?
Okay, cool. I just wanna make sure that we were, you know, definitely thinking about that too. And of course, I know we will definitely talk about this, but hopefully we'll talk about this in the future. But if there are capital, whatever type it is, more containers to, for unserved areas, um. That payment's coming from the pro technically, right? Who, who owns that? Those carts, who owns the upgrades? And I think that's a really important piece that we need to make sure that we touch on, uh, before implementation.
Yep, and there's different approaches that we could take on, on container uh, ownership, um. Uh, you know, so you might think about like a. A depot situation potentially where you're providing roll-off bins or something like that. Um, you know, does that make more sense that the ownership uh, really lies with the service provider? Or are we talking about carts that, you know, uh, may make sense over time to be, uh, to be the ownership to, to lay with the. With the pro, the resident is gonna be, is gonna be the owner of that, so. Uh, I don't know if we wanna necessarily have a system where you're pulling back your carts at the end of, uh, at the end of the year. Um, but you know, I think those are definitely important considerations for us to think through.
Pete, I know you've got one more slide here. Uh, we just want to ensure enough time for uh, Rick's two slides after yours.
Okay, I hadn't looked at the, the new slide, so. Liz?
Well, uh, Liz Chapman with Recycle Colorado, I wanted to. Um, second, that I think it's important that the reimbursement rate formulas be separated. For collection, processing, hauling. In a line, in alignment with what Mark and Barrett had said. I also wanted to touch on your question on that previous slide about. Um, how do we track the train of material? And it strikes me that in the subscription based universe where there's a formula. For reimbursing people in order for a service provider to get that reimbursement. There has to be a reporting requirement and, but that does not seem like it would be terribly onerous. Terribly onerous. It seems like there would be a relatively easy way to set up an online portal That any service provider that has an agreement with CAA to provide service in an area And has accepted the rates that they will be reimbursed for providing that service Would then be expected before they get that reimbursement that they'd have to fill out a form That would say this is where the material went and CAA would have provided Checkboxes for verified end market places. So that those small providers, we've got a whole bunch of small providers across Colorado. And I think a lot of them, to the point Scott DeFife was making earlier, I think a lot of them are going to decide this might be a good time to sell and It it's we're gonna see fewer of them, I would guess, but not U- ubiquitously. And there needs to be a way for those smaller operators That can ma- meet the competitive bid process or are willing to take whatever rate is set. Can, um, assuming that there's a rate set that allows for their businesses to continue operating, which I think is the intention Of this whole process is to set rates that still allow a business to operate. They're going to find it difficult to Track all those materials, but I think that there's a way to create an online portal That says you have to, you have to fill out this form, you have to report where that material is going. And here are all the places we have pre-verified that you could send it to. Does that make sense? That that's what I'm thinking will need to be the case in the In the case of subscription, especially with the smaller service providers that don't have the infrastructure that some of the large companies, multinational companies do.
Yeah, thanks, Liz. It's it's um, I think it's an important consideration, A, we want to think about, and I think the next slide Deals with this, so maybe if we move forward one slide to some extent. Um, so we we need to think about the current construct that's in place right now. What is the current uh, structure in place right now? Um, uh, the pro wants to ensure that there's healthy competition within the marketplace. Um, otherwise, potentially, uh, we may not have much competition and that isn't necessarily good for uh, everyone either. So how do we ensure that multiple players can play within and 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 compete in a healthy manner within the the marketplace and people have access To be able to do that? How do we make sure that's the the case? And how do we look also as well at We are looking at new requirements, we are looking at new con- conditions. So as we talk about this, we we may think as well about some of the things that we're asking for may not be Uh, we're at one hundred percent of everything the way we want it structured on day one. But we have sort of a buildup that allows people to adjust their businesses to make sure that Um, they they can uh, uh, participate and 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 uh, provide servicing. So I think we are looking for some of that input as well as to how do we make sure that this, Again, we can transition it into it. It allows the market to move from where it is today Uh, to to where we want it to be um, uh, moving forward. So Again, I think there are some ways in the program plan that we can look at some of the requirements that we may be putting to say, You know, here is the start of what we're asking for and it 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 will build potentially over time. So I think we're looking for feedback, getting feedback from haulers and 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 processors On those types of things would be helpful for us to uh, to get. Um, And then understanding again, how do we make sure that there's continuous improvement within the system? Um, and I think this gets to, you know, partially um, Barrett's comments earlier as well around Making sure that companies can make investments, longer-term investments In their infrastructure, whether that be MRFs, whether that be rolling stock Uh, or containers or whatever that might be that aid the system overall, that give them some security To know that they can make larger investments over a period of time and their stability on that side. That's easier to do partly, I would say, through that sort of more of that direct contracting uh, type of relationship than a reimbursement formula. Um, but again, I think we're looking for a little bit of feedback on that side to figure out how we best uh, best achieve that. And I don't know whether uh, uh, um, we come back to this slide and and knowing that we we still need uh, comments Uh, from from the public and and also I know Rick, I want to make sure Rick has time to provide some some feedback on on or to to go through his slides.
Yeah, thanks, Pete. I think we ha- if we hand the mic over to Rick Keter, Keter, uh, we're to talk through A real-life model of our MRF cost reimbursement formula, then we can go to comments at the end or quest, further questions at the head. So over to you, Rick.
Yes, thank you. Rick Hader, Swordfish Consulting, MRF. And this is just an example of modeling that is currently Being uh, used throughout the country for open contracts and for some fixed long-term contracts. And then I was looking at well, how you, Pete, were thinking you were going to execute on paying the processor. So my assumption is that you're paying the processor net of material sales. Um, and uh, that's your mentality. So I wanted to walk through this quickly. So in this scenario, CAA and the processor through an RFP process or whatever Will agree to a fixed processing fee on a per-ton basis. That fixed fee would be OpEx, all my operational costs, labor, maintenance, All of those basic costs, SGNA, which is management, sales, general and administrative, And then current state depreciation, uh, because I'm thinking you're going to be investing In the CapEx going forward, not us. And then a margin. So our fixed fee would be that, that. You would pay us this process, uh, the processor, the fixed fee, net thirty. And that's something else that we wanted to talk about because in the past with with e-scrap, Getting paid was a quite a challenge. And many MRFs that did this struggled to get reimbursed in a uh, in a good amount of time. So we're looking to, for you to just pay us, let's say it's a hundred and fifty bucks is our processing fee. The pro- the processor then will challenge all, will channel all of their material sales revenue into an escrow account. The processor will then share a percentage of material revenue When blended value exceeds the processing fee to incentivize best markets, Them going after best markets, going for best yield and for lowering their residue rates. If they're going to get paid more of and bonused through scrap revenue, they're going to go out and try to do better. And then CAA identifies a fund for capital improvements And uses a portion of material sales revenue to fund this. And then we as processors would then vie for those uh, funds Through some type of grant or program that would tie, you would tie uh, expectations of Im- improved yield, less residue, uh, reduced headcount, or whatever you feel is important. And that kind of, that structure there ties to this tool, which is the next slide. So most people on this call probably don't have not seen this top uh, matrix Where you actually show what a MRF is producing by percent of commodity. The guys at KW know this, all of the other folks know that we produce X percent of HD natural and HD color on average, based on our regions. And then in that column to the right, yellow column, you'll see pricing. And these are just baked-in pricing that I threw in just for argument or for discussion. That then would show, wh- what we do is we tie to an index, which is in the middle. And then then uh, now we're all fixed. We know uh, who we're gonna go to and what we're Uh, basically what indexes we're going to be compared against. You see the percentages of our yield and you can then give us goals to improve that yield and tie it to capital. But in this tool, what you see is it drills down to uh, a blended value per ton, Which is the compilation of all of those uh, that column that has the per-ton value in it. And then, so it identifies that, hey, my material coming in Uh, having plugged in negative seventy-five for residue is worth one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents. My processing fee is a hundred and fifty, that's what we agreed to. Uh, and the the negative of that is thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. So in, if if I were to plug in a higher blended value there, Then there would be some sharing that would start to take place That would uh, that we would as a a MRF, I would get a piece of the action so that it would incentivize me to To be a a top, top-rate processor. It would also give you an idea of what uh, what at the end of the game theoretically we'd be having to cover Or you'd have to be covering in this endeavor. If it, I'm not proposing that we keep the scrap revenue subtracted from our costs And only pay you the thirty-four dollars or ask you to pay us the thirty-four dollars. I'm suggesting you you pay us a hundred and fifty bucks a ton. We're whole. And then the scrap revenue, material sales becomes A bucket of funds that now is able to be used for capital, education, and other things. So it, I just wanted everyone to see kind of how this is working in the field now And how many people who are out contracting for tons, if I were to go to To waste management or any other and say, I have a eight, eight thousand tons to offer you. This is something similar to what they would put together to to share with us and try to make it work. And I I again, I just thought it was important for everybody to see the percentages of our yield, how it relates to the cost or the value we make. And then what each of those components where you can see like OCC in that category Is is contributing fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents to that blended value of one fifteen. And everyone can understand how these materials impact our cost and our revenue. Um, and this is very transparent. Most guys won't want to show you all this stuff. Uh, because it it is sharing some very uh, those market rates are are privileged. And uh, and that's where, when Liz brought up, we can share end markets with, that have been uh, Vetted, I don't know if I'm gonna, you're gonna get all the end markets because I don't know that they're gonna want to Share with you all of those if you're gonna allow other people to use their end markets. Does that make sense? Uh, so that's kind of my short presentation.
Rick, I don't, I don't look at uh, we would be looking to make sure that markets are verified. We're not looking to put out a list of 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 markets that anyone can look to. Um, I think You know, that's just a question of of us making sure that somebody has verified that that marketplace.
Got it.
Market, that end market. So we're not looking, that's not a shared, uh, I I know that there is lots of sensitivity around markets uh, for Service providers, that's uh, that's part of uh, part of the 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 Competitive marketplace. Um, so I don't think that's at all what we would be uh, looking to do. We just want to make sure that there is That market has been verified. Um, yeah.
I think you had asked earlier about uh, how do we incentivize residue reduction? How do we incentivize Um, a higher yields? Um, you know, I think if they share in the revenue, they'll be incentivized to do is, to do better. Um, a- and then if you Limit or uh, carve out the grants that you are able to provide via the the scrap material sales fund, You uh, you can then start managing to higher yield, less residue, and set goals for the processors to get there. I've rambled enough. I I'm happy to have pu- uh, provided this to everyone now.
Thanks, Rick. I I think very helpful. And I think, you know, th- this is the sort of feedback that we're looking for. Um, and you know, every MRF may be in a, in a slightly different pers- position as to sort of what, what is the best outcome that they're looking for? As I said, in some ways, this is, this is used, this type of shared uh, shared risk type of model, shared risk, shared opportunity type of model when it comes to Uh, markets and materials. As I said, in some cases, uh, the the pro is taking all of the risk. Um, uh, and they're just really putting it on the processor to meet certain uh, 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 quality assurances And potentially stepping those those quality assurances up over time that allows them to invest in in infrastructure that way. Yeah, there's some different ways that you can go about doing it.
Yeah, this definitely puts all the risk on you and that's, that's my job as the MRF guy, right?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Well, I'm gonna put a call out for public comment. And if we don't get any comments, we can go back to Pete, your last slide and any further questions uh, or comments that arise. Uh, so for public comment, if Anyone is interested in providing public comment, please submit your name and organization in the chat. We will then call on attendees in the order that requests were received. So far, we haven't received any public comment, public input. But Brendan, please let us know if anything comes through.
And maybe as you're doing that, I don't know if others had questions for Rick about the model that he had put out, um.
Right, thanks, Pete. I think let's just open up to any questions or comments from the advisory board. It doesn't seem like we're getting any public comments come through. So over to you, Scott.
Sorry, I just couldn't help myself. Uh, Scott DeFife, Glass Packaging. Is that a real-life example, Rick? Or was that a representative sample of a blended real-life situation?
Uh, no, you'd, uh, I put in fake numbers because I didn't want anybody to misconstrue that this was Boulder County's blended value.
Right.
Okay.
Inside the, inside the construct, though, if people are looking for the glass, it's in the residue line.
Now, say that one more time.
I don't think you, you didn't have glass in there. And so I think it was a a, an accurate representation of a lot of single-stream MRFs. It's in the residue line.
That, in that particular MRF, you're absolutely right. I didn't see that. But that was a MRF that That uh, was in Kansas City and it had, it was using uh, uh, depot glass.
Uh, yeah.
You're, you're probably familiar with them, yes.
I I know who it is. Well, I have, I I know who it could be. I know the model that it could be.
Yep.
No, but it begs the question about the the infrastructure. I mean, there are I think we started to talk about it a couple months ago. There are certain pieces of infrastructure that probably should have been installed all along. And, you know, the PRO You know, Shouldn't be on the hook for funding things that should have been installed. Until you get to the next iteration of quality level service and things of that nature. So I just, I think somewhere in there is a, is a I mean, there's a new, new, new discussion here on rates and and risk. So. But thanks, sorry.
Sorry, uh, rates and, yeah, I, well, I guess it gets into the, you know, how is the, how is the pro Investing in 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 new M- MRF infrastructure? What is the best way for them to incent?
And 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 are you responsible for the parent company's sales and marketing and Corporate and all that other stuff anymore? Are you Responsible for the service and the jurisdiction that you're responsible in the service for?
Thanks, Scott. Over to Rick.
Yeah, my concern is the smaller rural communities that didn't have the funding to do this, nor had the girth Uh, or volume or s- or reach are grossly disadvantaged if they, if And I I mean, they, some of them don't even have Eddie currents. Uh, I mean, it's Uh, so just getting them to base level, I I think there must or should be some means to support Operators in rural areas that haven't had the funds That should be able to use an Eddie, should be able to get an optical sorter. Um, and I don't think they should be disadvantaged because they can. I mean, waste management's gonna come in and Put a, put a plant in a, and with twenty-three optical sorters in it. I mean, good lord. Uh, because they have the the capital to do that, uh, I mean, I need to get there. So does, so do the smaller places. So I I don't know what to think about that, Scott.
No, I, there's bigger places that haven't made the investments and there's smaller places that need the help to make the investment. So I think it's, there's There's something on both sides, but I under- I hear you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions for Peter? We still have ten minutes remaining. Rick, I can see your hand up again.
Sorry, guys, folks. So you asked how to incentivize improved levels of worker safety. I think as a baseline, Peter, you need to at least, in the Murph world, we use T R I R. Uh total recordable incident rate. And at a minimum, you'd uh set that the OSHA standard as your base and then you incentivize. Those Murphs or operations that exceed or beat the uh uh that T R I R. I I will say that bonus systems and structures are now not in in uh uh. Most big operators are shying away from paying bonuses and things of that nature to incentivize. Because the the employees then begin to not report and hide reporting. And uh and they found that it was more dangerous to pay bonuses. Uh because of that than it was to continue paying bonuses. So just something to think about. Um how do you incent continuous improvement programs, innovation, yield, contamination? Well, eh the in the old days, we used to do residue reduction bonuses, so we would identify. A level that a Murph current state is, and then we would, looking at their technology, identify. What goals they may get and we might pay them, if we're sharing scrap revenue. We might pay them one percent additional scrap revenue for one percent of reduced residue. So those kind of bonuses do work and they do incentivize a Murph to go out and invest. Because one percent of that scrap revenue in a two-shift operation is a lot of money. The the data request that you have there is kind of tough because we would even struggle with that in some. Instances, we know where the material's coming from at the Murph and others were contracted with haulers. Who don't tell us where that material came from, so our data is gonna be skewed by. Who controls the flow of material into the plant, who owns that? So that one is a tough one. And that's me, thank you.
So Ri- Rick, if I can just follow up on on uh starting at the top, so the uh standard requirements um. Are there uh so that the two that you had mentioned, uh OSHA and uh was it the T R I, T R I rate? Um. Are those fairly standard within within Colorado, within, you know, my I guess my question really is about. How do we make sure that we're moving forward with? If we're gonna move to standard requirements, how do we move forward in a way that makes sure that everybody can keep up? Um right, so uh maybe we maybe maybe, you know, it's just a. We want safe operations and and that's that's it, so that's not something we're going to look at uh implementing over a period of time. Uh but maybe it's something that, you know, in order, and I think this fits uh potentially leads to some of the things you were saying. You know, do we potentially bump out a whole bunch of people if we require something that potentially they can't meet in in the short period of time and so. You you know, I'm I'm interested in feedback on those types of things to say. You you know, what what is the current base level? Um uh providing or what what are they meeting right now and what if we're asking these additional requirements? You know, um and they're new, is there time additional time needed for them to uh to put them in place?
Yeah, I I doubt anyone that we're talking about here is not doing their OSHA three hundred log, two hundred, three hundred, I forget what it is. Um which then that data is used against your labor hours to calculate T R I R. Uh I I know the big guys, the operator waste, Republic, they all measure. The Murphs at T R I R uh because that is an OSHA standard. The collection guys have different uh standards that they measure to and I'm not that. So uh they have another metric that OSHA looks at. But in the Murph, T R I R, everyone's should be doing that, that is a, that's just a baseline. Uh even for small, small Murphs, they're they're still required to to fill out an OSHA log. And and understand, then they can easily understand what their T R I R is, just using the formula that OSHA provides. Does does that make sense, Pete?
Yep, thank you.
All right, any final questions or comments on any of the topics that have been covered? Barrett?
Yeah, Barrett Jensen, voice connections. Um just since we're throwing it out there, you know, in in addition to OSHA, which we do at all the post-collection sites and the collection facilities. Um and hauling companies, um DOT has has regulating body as well.
What is that metric called, uh Barrett?
We use uh what we call our I R for incident rate, which is a rolling twelve month um percentage. But for like DOT, like we trap hours.
All right. Thanks, Barrett. Pete, is there any final comments on your end or anything you wanted to follow up with?
No, I think it's been great, I mean, my brain is full now, so uh lots to to think through, uh so I appreciate everybody's time today and and um. You you know, as I said, this is an ongoing discussion, so I think uh. Um uh this isn't the last conversation we'll be having on these items.
All right, thanks very much. Pete, thank you for your presentation and thank you to the board members for your great comments and questions. We're incredibly grateful for your input, appreciate the time you put into researching these topics and providing your expertise. We are at the time of the meeting to recap and talk about next steps and then adjourn. So as a recap, we will compile the feedback from this session and share it with the board. We will revisit all of these topics with particular attention carved out for more discussion. On a risk-based approach to responsible end markets. And for discussing districting, districting versus open market contracted systems for the reimbursement formula. As a reminder, C A A is looking for feedback from haulers, processors and local governments. So please watch for notices from them for further, for additional work sessions and also submit your feedback. To via E P R comments at state.co.us. And it will be part of the documented feedback for C A A. The meeting. Recording for for the recording for today's meeting will be posted on the E P R website within the next few days. Please join us at our next regularly scheduled advisory board. Business meeting in person on the thirteenth of June. The importance of this meeting is to provide the board with information on education and the first piece on producer juice methodology. And finally, members of the public stakeholders, thank you for your for attending today, we va- value your participation and partnership. And really appreciate you taking the time out of your day to be part of the E P R program development. We hope you will continue to stay connected and share the details of this program with others. I will close by saying thank you to the board for the great feedback and questions. We acknowledge your expertise and we, as we move through building this model E P R program in Colorado, so thanks again. The first technical work session of twenty twenty-four is now adjourned at three twenty-eight P M. Thank you.
Great job in there, Megan, especially, yeah, for your first, no, it went great. I'm surprised we didn't get any public comments really throughout any of it.
I know, none at all.
I mean, I guess that that made it a little easier for us and there was a lot more time for discussion, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, great, well, uh yeah, it was fun being able to to work together and Tanya and Valentina, thank you both so much for your work, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks so much, Brendan, and um we'll see you in person, I think in a couple of weeks, will I see you, are you?
I am actually going to be out during that week, but one of my colleagues um will be filling in for me there. Uh but it should be a a really fun time, I was gonna say, I we've put a lot of uh, you know, elbow grease into this tour, so I'm sure you guys will have fun.
Yeah, exactly, all right, well, have a good, secure day, thank you.
Yeah, you too.